All right, welcome back from lunch. Yeah, I just want to, I want to make a couple of quick announcements. There was an item that was left off of the electronic agenda.
Yeah, it was off the printed agenda.
Printed agenda. And it's been updated. It was on the electronic agenda, but it wasn't on the printed agenda. It was item number 10. And we'll go back to it after we're finished with this. It has to do with authorization for a board chair to sign a letter of support for the Mark Twain Healthcare District Construction at New Clinic at Valley Springs. So, got to have that one in, right? So, we'll do that after, that'll be the feel-good thing. So...
Yeah, adjusted to number one.
And then, so that means that we are on agenda item number 12 right now, all right? Number 12. And we will continue. I would like to, I would like to ask if there are any other members of the public that want to talk and come up and talk about what has been going on so far. If you've spoken once, that's it.
The agenda's not here. It's items 11 and 12 that are down here. It's called your...
Yeah. Without reprint.
We replaced the agendas that were out there this morning with the updated version. So, if you pick, if you picked one up this morning, it was missing the item that Supervisor Edson mentioned, number 10. If you got them after lunch, you have the correct agendas.
All right, so if you got them after lunch, you have the correct agenda. It's just that we added number 10 in there. And, oh, by the way, that was my fault. That's what she said. It was my fault. I said, "Bring it on. It's going to be a lot of things my fault." All right? So, basically, it's just the addition of the support for that clinic in Valley Springs. And that's number 10. So, now we are on number 12. And I'm asking once again if there are any more public comments that wish to get up and speak.
About...
We're moving on, on the, in the appeal hearing. Okay? So, we are just, where we left off was public comments. I wanted to make sure that we start off with public comments. So, we are right back there. Next will be the, the applicant is, will be a summation by the applicant.
He has a chance to talk.
Yeah. So, I want, I would like to give the applicant a chance to talk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bill Abbott, Abbott and Kinderman, on behalf of Ford Construction and CB Asphalt. The issue at the moment is a fairly narrow issue of interpretation of your code as it stands today. There was 20-odd speakers that preceded me, spoke passionately about a number of issues. And those issues, frankly, from my perspective, invoke questions of how the ordinance ought to be rewritten, how you should amend your development code, but really, we're not focused on the question of what does your code say today with respect to the proposed use. I have with me today representatives from Ford Construction, CB Asphalt. If you have any technical questions regarding the operations, that's not, I don't think, terribly germane to the interpretation question, but I want you to know that they're here if you have any questions about the proposed activities. There was a suggestion by one of the speakers that this interpretation of what was an allowed use in the zoning code was something that Abbott and Kinderman conjured up. I'm flattered that, this is the first time in my career in almost 40 years I've ever been, been attributed with, with that kind of statement. But let's, let's deal with what happened. I mean, the issue before you is an interpretation from Mr. Maurer. And if you review the Planning Commission staff report, which I believe is in your packet, Mr. Maurer sets forth a detailed review of how he reached his conclusion. And the protocol that he followed is, in fact, the protocol that you would see any professional planner engage in in California. They start with your current code. To the extent an issue is subject to multiple interpretations, the next item in order is to go look at the legislative history, which is what Mr. Maurer testified to, and in fact, is reflected in the staff report. And then beyond that, look at the administrative history. How has this county administered this code in the past? That's the narrow, those are the narrow issues that are before you today. And this whole debate about a hot plant doesn't start with this project. The evidence is the county has granted, by my understanding, three permits for hot plants on this very site. In 2007, in the same zoning district, the county issued permits without going through the use permit process on another, on another asphalt plant. So, this is not something that is before the county for the first time. You have documents in your records and in the administrative record that reflect how the county has administered the code in the past. So, this is not some interpretation by Mr. Maurer, and we, of course, support his interpretation, that we're just making up out of thin air. So, again, his protocol in terms of trying to resolve this interpretation is exactly the practice that you would want your planning staff to engage in. And his interpretation is documented. It's in the record. It's well reasoned. It's based upon your code, and it's based upon past administrative practices of this county. And his interpretation is consistent with all of that. This, this fact pattern of trying to interpret a code is certainly not rare. I've been a legal advisor for rural counties for almost 40 years. I currently represent five counties, mainly the planning department, Board of Supervisors, Planning Commission. This type of issue comes up frequently. So, what do the courts look for? The courts look for the kind of analysis that your staff has performed. Because the courts recognize that as the Board of Supervisors, a zoning code as compared to the California Building Code is a unique animal that is unique to your jurisdiction. So, the courts will defer, give a great deal of deference to how you interpret your own code. So, we would certainly support the interpretation by Mr. Maurer, an interpretation that is documented and was independently vetted by your planning commission. You know, they reviewed all the evidence. They reviewed the testimony. They heard the testimony from the public, and they agreed with Mr. Maurer's interpretation. One note of caution I would, I would make based upon some of the testimony I heard before. It appeared that there was extrapolation from the building code into the zoning code. And my note of caution is that, under California law, the California Building Codes are adopted by the state building commissions. Those codes, in turn, are passed down to local governments under the authority of state law. It is not uncommon for building codes to include the state's definitions, and those vary from those in your zoning code. So, what, I think what you're charged with is trying to interpret the four corners of your zoning code, as Mr. Maurer has done. There was reference to the air quality study, just to make sure that you understand. The APCO had the proposed hot plant analyzed. The report that came back, not the applicant's expert, the expert hired by the county demonstrates that the proposed hot plant satisfies all applicable air quality requirements. That's the scope of the analysis. That was the question that was asked, and that's the report that has come back.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes?
You keep using the word "hot plant." You're the first one to use that today. Are you referring to the same asphalt plant?
All right. Thank you for, for bringing that up. The, as the speakers have pointed out, there is some interchangeability of terms here. So, the mixing of the proposed plant by CB Asphalt is what I'm referring to. This is the onsite at home.
I figured you were. I just wanted to clarify, because I haven't heard that term today, and there's some mixing of terms.
So, I, again, you know, we support Mr. Maurer's analysis and the decision of the Planning Commission. We think that analysis is well documented. I'm not going to repeat that for you, because you already have that in your materials. What I emphasize, you know, the issues that are on the slide, quite, one of the questions raised is whether or not a new mining use permit. I think Mr. Maurer gave you the appropriate explanation of how the original use permit was required for this project. I believe it was in conjunction with the reclamation plant, plan. The county used a CUP for that purpose. That doesn't dictate a new use permit on that site, does not answer the question of interpreting your code. And finally, I wanted to reinforce the point with respect to the amendment, or the alleged amendment to the reclamation plan. The reclamation law in California is very clear. It doesn't say any change within the four corners of an approved reclamation plan has to be reflected in an amendment. The code specifically talks about a substantial change. And if you remember Mr. Maurer's discussion and his analysis, that this plan is going to be proposed within the four corners, doesn't require any modification, doesn't extend the life of the mining operation, those are all relevant considerations to the question of whether or not you have to have an amendment to the reclamation plan. And I don't think, under any, any reasonable interpretation of those facts, you can reach a conclusion that there's a substantial change that would necessitate an amendment. Again, we concur, and we support Mr. Maurer's analysis, that of the Planning Commission. The other issues as to how you should possibly amend your code in the future, we can always engage in that at a future point in time, but I think that's beyond the scope of today's proceedings. Again, we have representatives from Ford as well as from CB. If you have any questions regarding the technical aspects of the, of what is proposed out there, I mean, there's, there's equipment onsite, but it's not operating, hasn't operated. They've invited the county in to inspect. They're not engaged in any preparation out there. Everything's inactive. So, that's the current status of the site as it exists today. That concludes our comments, my comments, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I have none at this time.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
Not at this time.
I believe I have a couple of questions. Ford Construction, historically, they've been operating a quarry surface mine at this facility for a period of time. That's correct?
That's correct, but I'm going to ask the representative.
Yes, since 1990.
1990. Okay. You abide by several different agencies that control that surface mining operation. One of those is MSHA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mining Safety and Health Administration.
Yes, there's 22 different agencies we comply with.
Could you give us a couple of those names as far as air quality? And, sir, you are?
Nick Jones, President of Ford Construction.
Okay.
Yes, we have the local air districts to deal with, statewide air districts. We have office emergency service to comply with, the local COOPA. MSHA, which is Mine Safety, OSHA, both, you know, state and feds. 22 of them, it's just kind of tough to pull them all off my head right this moment.
Are you required to do any air monitoring on perimeters or anything of that sort?
Yes, we do it yearly for our employees. We also have our own air monitoring we, we do for conformance testing of our own.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Have you ever been issued a citation by MSHA or by OSHA?
Not OSHA. MSHA, we've had occasion to get some citations. The last one that comes to mind is we've got written up for not having a lid on our trash can. That's the level of scrutiny that we're under.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Okay.
I do have a question for CP Asphalt.
Yes, sir. Sean Simmons, CB Asphalt.
Mr. Simmons, the system that you're planning to put into operation, is it a manufacturer recognized by Fed standards and state standards?
Are you speaking about the baghouse for the air?
Actually, the baghouse and the hot plant. That's actually certified by Fed standards and state standards by the manufacturer.
Yes, sir. We fought, we fought, we also, kind of on top of what Nick was talking about, federal DEQ, EPA, and state. All of these, the newer plants, this one in particular, is in keeping with all current and also what they believe to be the next, through 2017, forecasted as standards to achieve when the levels go up almost yearly. So, they're trying to beat them to the punch, so to speak. But everything is governed Washington, keeping with all compliance standards for federal EPA.
Thank you, sir.
I'd also like to note on that engineer's test that we had done, the threshold of what is acceptable for air, we, we are at 20% of that threshold. So, we still have 80% room of growth if we need to. Okay? Do you understand what I?
I think I understand.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
What are the projected hours of operation?
On the hot plant itself, sir?
Yes.
Right now, everything is day work, except for one project that we'd like to do out of the plant, which wouldn't happen until probably mid to late summer next year, and it would be night operations, approximately 15 shifts at night. And that's, all of the jobs right now are Caltrans. The plant would probably fire up around 4:00 or 5:00 a.m., and it depends on production standards, and we're looking at eight-hour shifts for the most part right now.
You have a project coming up with night shifts?
We have one contract, yes, that we'd like to supply out of this hot plant. It wouldn't happen until probably July of 2016, if...
That was the 15-day period?
Yes, sir.
I read about in the material.
That's the only night work we have. And total, total days for the plant right now that we could supply is probably in the neighborhood of three and a half months total is all we have right now that we could. Even if I wanted to do more, we don't, we don't have a need for it. We get, a lot of folks that I talk to think we're going to run every day, five days a week and more, and that's simply not the case. We just don't have the, the need. Supply and demand.
So, actually, when you have a Caltrans project come up, those projects are planned year in advance, and the requirements or bids are requested from you at a time where it's in the future?
It depends. We're actually bidding on a project this afternoon. It's Caltrans over out of Jackson. That job, the way the state gives you on that job, for instance, you have to start no later than June of 2016. It's project for project with Caltrans, and there's different reasons that they come up with it. But on average, you probably have a three-month window from bid date to start of work. But we've been seeing lately, and I don't pretend to understand why, they are giving you a lot more time for some reason than I don't know why.
All right, I understand. Caltrans wants to be more user-friendly.
Well, I don't know about that.
That came on second. Are you, are you going to be involved in rubberized asphalt?
We've got one project that we would like to use the plant for that's, that would use liquid rubber, yes. It would be Palmer Modified as well. But it depends. Caltrans is changing a lot of that. They're talking about a change order right now on that project specifically to take that out of the equation. If that happens, then right now, we have no rubberized asphalt out of the plant.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You betcha.
All right. You guys?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. So, just on the project by project, you know, right now, it looks like you have some night shifts lined up for the summer, but there's no reason, if you've got things rolling or, you know, everything worked out, there's a lot of business. I mean, you would want to have as much business as you could. I mean, it seems like you could operate it 24/7 theoretically, under the current operation that you have in mind.
Yes, you could.
I think that's some of the concern that you hear from folks.
And we, I understand that concern.
I have a question. I'm going to let you clarify, because I've heard a lot today, I've read a lot today, got a lot of last-minute information here. So, can you briefly, in say, three minutes, describe what you're going to do at this plant? What's, what's the idea behind it?
What's the, the idea behind it?
Right. I've heard things like the, you know, hot plant and this kind of plant, that kind of plant. How do you best describe what your plans are?
Yes, it's a hot, it's a continuous drum hot mixed asphalt plant. It's not a very big plant as far as plant standards go. It's a late-model plant. It's got a lot of what we call, we added the blue smoke containment systems to it. So, it's been upgraded so that we've taken it, knowing how things are going again down the road. We've tried to do our, our best to mitigate future tighter restrictions on emissions, et cetera. From our point of view, it's, it's really pretty simple. We'd like to get a little bit more work, you know, construction work. That plant itself, Ford will provide us with the aggregates when the jobs allow, and yes, if we'd like it to grow the business, so to speak. And, and see how it goes. That plant won't run 24/7 right now. Even if, if this all works out and we get full approval and it goes, I don't know how the economics would be. There again, you can only reach effectively, there is other hot plants strategically placed everywhere. So, it's, I say supply and demand, but it's a market effect. It depends. But it's really, in, in all honesty, it's pretty simple terms. If we have a project or sales, we'd, we'd just fire up the hot plant, make the mix, the product for the job or for the sales for the client, and then it'd shut it off and wait till we have more to sell. It's, I don't know if that's...
Yeah, I just, you know, there's lots of, you know, misinformation. I, you know, I just want to make a comment at this point is that, you know, heard a lot of information today about this particular project and have over the last several months, and, you know, how one interprets something and carries forward. But one of the things that, that I think is probably, I guess saddens me about this project is all the misinformation that is out there. Both, you know, just a lot of misinformation. And, you know, when I look at everything that's been said today and what I've been reading, it just, you know, a little bit more public outreach, I think, is most helpful. So, if anything, we walk away today, I, I think that is something that needs to be probably number one on the list. Public outreach is most important to kind of, you know, help educate people about what, what is going on. You know, I have come across, not only in the readings, but some websites and, you know, found, this is a somewhat, oh, how do I, interesting topic. Never knew so much about asphalt until now. Now, I grew up in the concrete business, so know a lot there, but asphalt was kind of, you know, I just kind of assumed it was all kind of the same. But anyway, I caution in that regards. Lot of misinformation, and, you know, for me, it's like trying to wade through that and get to the core root of what the issues are. So, that's all I have to say.
I would agree with you. Hindsight sometimes is much clearer, and we're, we're not perfect.
You're learning. We, I, I would agree. None of us are perfect. Thank you.
I, too, would like to make a comment. You're right. One of our, one of the greatest hurdles we have is education and knowing what was actually going on, having an understanding of that. I guess this is an issue that I can actually say I do know something about. In my past career, I was actually a safety director for a large construction company that had four quarries and four hot plants. Actually establishing one quarry and hot plant and actually remediation of, of one very well-known quarry and hot plant. I was involved in the operations that require you to be EPA acceptable. I was involved in the, the OSHA requirements. I was involved in MSHA as being a certified instructor with MSHA. And I guess that gives me a little bit of edge of knowing what really is true of the education. And from the answers I've heard today, I'm convinced that you are abiding by those regulations of those 22 agencies. MSHA is a very difficult agency to be in compliance with. And I can believe you got a citation for not having a lid over a garbage can. Like I said, I, I believe what, what has been said here is factual and within regulatory accepted standards.
But one of the things that was said to me early on in the process is that you wouldn't be able to see the hot plant unless I'm having a dream that that was said to me. And it was, it was said that they were going to build, that, that onsite, you were going to build a rock wall which would basically disguise it from view.
What our intentions are, sir, is to put the aggregate stockpiles between the hot plant now. I mean, you can see where the hot plant's stored right now, and that, that's, that's going to be the final site, but it's towards the back, the far back of the property. And our intent is to put the stockpiles encompass the, the front perimeter, if you will, of the plant. And ideally, those will be high enough to sound wall, for instance, ongoing, and as well as it, emissions, what emissions? The steam is a primary emission that's going to come out of a hot plant. If we get approval and go, I can already tell you, people are going to probably freak out, "My God, look," and they're going to see white steam coming up out of it. But that also has been known, we're, the way we are back in that pit, it will effectively help put anything that would come out, predominantly steam vertically into the air instead of any other direction, and hide it. I mean, aesthetically, we do what we can.
But in, in time, a lot of that should disappear from the view when you're looking from the outside.
Ideally, we'll keep the stockpiles there.
Another thing that was brought up, and you gave us a phone number, was about mine safety. Do you have, you must have like a set of rules you're confined to about the safety at the mine, or?
Oh, you bet, sir. We've got, our, our safety programs, mine-specific, I'll let Nick talk.
Yes, it's, the CFR is Part 46, and it's a, it's a book about YAC and very fine print that takes a microscope to read. So, yes, there is a very defined set of rules to follow.
Okay, I'm not too surprised about that. Do you get audited very often on that?
We get audited many times a year.
Okay. And when you said you're going to test for air quality, where do you test, like near the mine site, or do you go a ways away?
We, we test on property line. We test partway into the plant, at the plant, and then all the operators are wearing a test monitor. So, as they're in the cab, as they're out of the cab, they're, they're pulling air samples. So, we have a good representative of absolutely every position within that facility.
They wear those monitors all the time?
No. That's what I was saying. It, we have, once a year, that we have to do this under regulatory controls. And then we also have it come in and do it for our own well-being a couple times a year.
Okay. The, the number of trucks, obviously, is a big concern that are coming out of there, and someone even brought up the emissions from the trucks. Do you, how many, say like, on an average workday, if that plant was going, how many trucks would be coming out of there? I'm not sure how many yards go in the back of each one. I've heard 25, and then somebody's told me another, another number.
Well, here's the deal. You know, we're, we're mining X number of tonne a year, and it's going to go out the gate either as aggregate or as asphalt.
Right.
So, the only increase in trucks that we will have, a net delta, is the oil trucks coming in, bringing the asphalt to motion.
So, legitimately, you're not projecting any increase in traffic?
Other than the oil trucks.
It's just, it's just what is inside.
That's correct.
How many oil trucks would be delivered?
Well, based on your, your tonnage for this next year, you said it was?
Total or per day?
Oh, you know, like on a, an average week where you're doing a pretty good...
Right now, with most of the work production wise, we're looking at, it would be a maximum of two asphalt tankers per day.
Two oil, the asphalt?
The hot oil coming through there and out, yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any kind of a levee system or a rock wall or something built in between the plant and the river?
Yeah, so where the plant is located, you know, if there would be a catastrophic failure of the double-wall insulated tank, our, our best math on it is the oil would travel 150 feet before it reached ambient temperature and, and solidifies. If that should not happen, and it should flow continuously, it is contained within our quarry floor. So, the way we have built the pad and graded it is to allow drainage so that we have full containment. So, all of our storm water that we collect, none of it from this area is discharged from our site. We have full containment. We have full containment. And that's by design.
One more thing. On your storage facility for your hot oil, those are actually containment approved by OSHA and MSHA.
Yes, that's correct.
So if you had a spill or a hose break, that would be contained inside that concrete sealed barrier-
That's correct.
-surrounding the above ground tank.
You got it.
Okay. So it wouldn't actually get into your quarry floor-
No.
-unless it got past that.
No. If we went through several safety checks and yet the end of the world was coming, we would still contain it, is what I'm getting at.
Additionally, too, as you're probably aware, if we get full permit approval, et cetera, to provide mix to a Caltrans project, too, that opens a whole nother set of inspection, minimum safety criteria, et cetera, including the oil tanks, concrete barriers around it will hold, you know, spillage, et cetera, MPQP 109 tests. It's a whole different gamut of tests that weren't part of the 22 other agencies that we also comply with.
That's correct. Any other questions?
What kind of training do you provide for the folks that operate such a plant?
Okay, so under MSHA, there's very strict guidelines on the training that we have to do. The training has to be documented on a weekly, monthly, every six months, there's different milestones. That documentation is kept and it's there onsite for MSHA when their inspectors come to evaluate our training records.
You're speaking as far as plant operation, equipment operation training. Every winter, we send our folks back to one of the hot plant manufacturers to get the latest and greatest in training. We also send, you and I went to cap proving grounds, we send folks down there. There's different training for paving, plant operation, all over the place. We send our folks as often as we see fit. The plant operator that we have on this operation right now has been running hot plants for 25 years.
And I'd like to add, for the last, since 1990, every year, we've gotten a national award for safety from MSHA for the amount of man-hours we've had with zero incidents. That's something to be proud of.
The last five years, our, was an MSHA, it was out on a project and that was Chester Bros asphalt, or excuse me, Chester Bros Construction. And we got fined $2,500 because we had Gatorade and not water available for our employees. So, you know, we hear that a lot of folks in, like you say, Stockton with the public outright, that there won't be any, without a CEQA, you know, there's no, we can run them on. Folks, that's as far as from the truth. And we live in California. California and New York are the two, I want to say worst states, toughest states, most stringent states with, we're licensed in 21 states in the nation. We don't work in New York. California is the toughest state and we're aware of that to meet all the criteria. So we are governed 16 words from Sunday.
So in this plant, the model number is E225P? Is that the plant, the model number you have?
Yes, sir.
And what, when was it, when is the manufacturing date on that?
This plant's 2008.
2008. So a lot of the plants that I think people may have experienced and see, you know, like down in, I guess maybe in Stockton or someplace where they have the big old plants, are they, any comparison to this?
This plant's newer than anything. Granted, Spinalis plant is newer. It's the, probably the only one within a 60-mile radius that I can think of right now that's newer. If that's what you're-
Well, I'm interested in, you know, how it's contained, you know, how it operates, the containment, the emissions that it puts out.
It's got an oversized baghouse system which collects all of the fugitive volatile dust, et cetera, when the burner's effectively taking the moisture out of the aggregate. Asphalt, a very simple process, folks, it really is. You take as dry aggregate as you can get and you mix hot liquid asphalt to it, so it gets a homogenous mixture, and then it goes up the slack conveyor. Everything's enclosed until it dumps into the truck on this plant. We've got aprons between the top and the slack conveyor, then that's closed the silo that the trucks pull under. And it actually, we've got a big black part of our blue smoke system apron. The only time, from the plant perspective, it's really exposed is when it discharges into the truck.
So this baghouse, it creates a negative pressure off of this thing, right? So all of the emissions are captured in this closed loop system. And any of the larger particles that drop down go through a series of screws and it ends up getting put back into the mix. So it's a completely enclosed system with no chance for escape other than at the discharge point.
Mr. Jones, let's clarify one thing. We talked a little bit about monitoring of your employees and your air monitoring and things of that sort. It wasn't necessarily for a hazmat situation, was it, for the particular requirements for surface mining?
That's correct. It has everything to do with your exposure to various elements, arsenic, you know, lead, copper, whatever, in addition to-
Whatever comes out of the ground naturally.
That's correct.
Okay.
And all of our employees go in yearly for a physical and their baselines are checked, their physical is compared to their original baseline prior to employment.
And that's an MSHA requirement?
That is an MSHA requirement.
And everybody on the mine property is subject to MSHA?
That's correct.
Including your plant operators?
That's correct.
Everybody steps foot through the gate.
Okay.
Hence, nobody could come in without signing in and being escorted by a miner. That's what's-
Site-specific training.
Yep.
The closest house, as far as my little Google Earth ruler tool goes, is 1850P. And I did some reading about the plant that you have and it, the noise of the asphalt plant proper is not that great. In fact, to that house, it would be about the same level of decibels as a modern-day dishwasher. But that being said about the asphalt plant proper, the rock mining is very noisy and I, you know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. When you start up, say at 4:00 in the morning, is the rock mining going to be, I mean, describe the process when you get there at 4:00. What goes on to the people that are hearing your operation?
Well, so for us, our mine, our rock extraction and crushing operation happens during normal hours. You know, we don't want to incur any overtime costs in addition to what we've already got going because there's no reason for it. We're not doing an emergency. So, you know, we do that within normal times. His operation, which is a complete quiet operation compared to our crushing deal, the hours he would work, nobody would ever hear it.
Yeah. And that's ideally, for instance, if I want hot mix on a specific project to start paving at 7:00 AM, depending on how long it's going to take the trucks to get there. So we back into that. We say 4:00 AM, that's not an everyday occurrence, but we didn't want any misconception if we did start at 4:00 AM that they're, you know, "Oh, my gosh, they're starting to hurt." When the guys show up, first thing they'll do is a safety inspection of all the equipment, make sure there was no vandalism, something didn't fall down, whatever the case may be. We don't expect that, it's part of our safety program. Then progressively, warm up the equipment, warm up the loader, fill the rock bins, they've already got the stockpiles up front. We load the bins, we fire up the hot plant, which is effectively a burner, the gen set. The gen set, probably the gen set and the burner is what would make the noise. The burner is really, it's a large blower with an enclosed flame that goes through the drum to heat the rock and get the moisture out. But, and it just starts running, the backup alarm on the loader-
This is going to be the worst part.
That'll probably be the one thing that will carry more than anything, like a coyote in the distance. You know, I live, as a crow flies a little over a mile from the hot plant right now and you can hear backup alarms, I don't know where they're coming from sometimes at my house.
And those are required by OSHA and MSHA.
That's correct.
You cannot silence those. That's for the safety of everybody.
Have you done any studies? And if I didn't see it, forgive me, but there's probably enough pages that I've looked at in the last 10 days that it's almost overwhelming, but, or five days. Of the most common prevailing winds that hit, have you looked at that at all?
Yeah, so they tend to go from west to east, you know, the Delta breezes that blow, you know, blow this direction that come up through, you know, the, where the Calaveras River is. So if, if anything, those breezes help with noise, they certainly help with any other particulate in the air, but, you know, I've heard complaints about dust and whatnot. We're not allowed to have fugitive dust. We get fined for that as well. So, you know, we have a water truck, we have sprinklers, you know, we try to keep that mitigated. So, you know, to go along with what you were asking, yes, we shouldn't have any issues, but the way the prevailing winds go, they go majority of the time away from the house.
A south wind would be uncommon?
Most of the time. Wintertime, that's obviously a little different deal, when storms are coming in.
Gentlemen, how many jobs do you create by the ability to manufacture asphalt at a local site versus what's available now?
So, you know-
A moving target.
But what we've, since 2008, we've actually had to lay off a lot of our workforce there. This has been our last-ditch effort to try to, you know, keep those families employed. So our hope is to bring back the ones that have been laid off, add to that, you know, upwards of creating 15 new jobs, is what we would have with a couple extra from your operation. But it's just not that. It's the ancillary stuff that goes with it. We're going to have upwards of 400 trucking jobs. All of our people utilize the services offered locally. We buy a lot of stuff from the hardware stores, you know, lunch and hotel rooms where we can get them, because we have a lot of out-of-town visitors and-
I think, Mr. Redd, I think a lot of it depends on the economy and, you know, the capture rate. Most of the work that we're doing of any scale is competitive. Most of our workforce is Calaveras County folks. Right now, I've got crews in Bakerfield, California. We just finished up Saturday in Seattle, Washington. We've been here in Valley Springs for three years now, doing the best we can to grow a new function. The company's based out of St. Louis, but everybody that works for us, the North part is from Calaveras County, we're all local. It's been tougher because we've had to buy mix to compete with the folks that make their own mix. And that's been somewhat of a restraint to our growth. I think this plant gets put in, ideally, we'd be able to put on another crew, keep our folks a little closer to home.
Is your paving operation also?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
All right, so I have to kind of break in here a little bit and say, let's get back on task for the, for what we're here to talk about on item number 12. All right. Otherwise, you know, we could sit here and do this for hours, so.
Are you kicking us out?
No, I'm not kicking, I'm not kicking you out. I would just like, I would just like us-
Take a seat, you're not done.
I would just like us to stay on task.
Okay.
All right, so at this time, all right, so we have a staff, okay, summation by, oh, okay, summation and rebuttal by the appellant.
Chairman, supervisors, the appeal before this board right now does not hinge on whether the plant creates jobs, whether it discharges emissions, the age of the plant, how much noise it makes, storage at the facility, or the safety involved with it. As the applicant's counsel said, it's a very narrow issue. That issue is, is the planning director's determination that asphalt is concrete thereby allowing asphalt plants to be upright in all of the M1 and M2 zone? That is the issue. Now, I don't fault Director Maurer. He's a planner, not an attorney. He based his decision on his training experience and his staff help. He simply made an error on a complex legal issue. The Planning Commission understandably supported his decision based on his experience, training, and his staff recommendation. And they upheld his decision. But as Chairman Edson referenced as we were going for lunch, we have to follow the rules. We can't bootstrap off other agencies, that there's 22 or 10 other agencies involved in it does not remove the supervisors from their obligation. There's an old adage, "If the law is on your side, argue the law. If you have facts, argue the facts. If you have nothing, then just argue." My brief and my presentation, I provided the law and I applied the law to the facts. So I'm going to discuss policy. The mine was grandfathered in as a gravel mine. There never was an asphalt plant on that site and to allow so would unfairly grant rights to a landowner that they're not otherwise entitled to. It's my understanding there are nearly 200 parcels of M1 and M2 that would now have asphalt plant by right. In fact, Ms. Tekel couldn't even read all of the parcels in her allotted five minutes. It's not fair to other landowners surrounding the quarry and now there are potentially 200 more locations throughout the county where asphalt plants could be built upright. I saw a petition brought before the board with 959 signatures. I think the community is not too pleased with the position that the Planning Commission held. I saw another letter with 193 signatures. Quite simply, the code used to say asphalt and now it doesn't. The supervisors wanted an environmental review and they can get that from a conditional use permit. With the conditional use permit, the community is protected, their health and safety is protected through CEQA review. As was said earlier, it is the supervisor's duty to ensure the law is upheld. Finding the appellant that asphalt plants are not by right at nearly 200 locations in the county would rectify the past errors and mistakes of the Planning Commission and the planning director. Sacramento is known as the city of trees. To find contrary for the appellant, the county that is now known for jumping frog jubilee would more likely be known as the county of asphalt. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
You, yeah, I do. Let me try to kind of find them. One of your, when you were making your final comments, you, I'm just trying to look for it so I don't put words in your mouth.
The jumping frog jubilee?
Pardon me?
About the jumping frog jubilee?
No, previously. You brought up that it would, approving this would affect the health and safety of the county. How would that do?
As was brought up during the Planning Commission and as shown in my brief, locating asphalt plants near schools, medical facilities, and residences does not look to me, or seem to me, like that's looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of people of this community.
And the other thing too, and forgive me if I missed it, when Mr. Abbott stood up, he said who he represented and I'm not clear of who you're here representing.
I did state when I got here, I will restate, I represent myvalleysprings.com, a nonprofit group, and Joyce Tekel.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I might have missed it.
They are actually paying your piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you answering my questions.
Staff summation and rebuttal?
I really don't, excuse me, I don't have much to add. One point, one point that was brought up by the appellant was the claim that I found- One point that was brought up by the appellant was the claim that I found that asphalt is concrete. That is not what I found. I know that there, asphalt is different than concrete. What I found was that our code treats an asphalt plant the same as a concrete plant, and I think there's a distinct difference there, and I just want to point that out. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add unless you have any further questions at me.
Mr. Chairman, question. Just so I understand correctly, our code states that asphalt is the same as concrete, is that what you just said?
No, no.
Okay, could you clarify that?
So, the appellant claims that I said that asphalt is concrete, I did not make that finding. What I found was that our code treats asphalt plants the same as a concrete plant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? So now we go through those. Members, should that be members? Alright, so now we get some more, so rebuttal by members of the public. So you get your second chance here.
Doesn't, doesn't, don't they get a chance for rebuttal?
Well, there will be.
Yeah, there's a, policies and procedures, it might even be in your drawer.
Broadcasters again, I just want to clarify something about the truck trips. Commissioner Ponte made a good point that information wasn't really getting out, and then Commissioner Kearney asked the representatives here how many truck trips, and you know, they didn't give you a number. They said, "Oh, a little more than now." That number is actually contained within Ms. Kinderman's letter of June 24th, it's either page two or page three, and it states it in two ways. Number one, it gives the annual number of, of tons that will be made, and that's 250,000 annually. And number two, it gives a maximum daily amount that would be made, and that's 3,000 tons. Now, Mr. Simon has testified, it's 25 tons to a truck. So on a day when 3,000 were made, that is 120 trucks going round trip up Silver Rapids Road on that day. For the year, it's a little over 10,000 trips, plus another 600 to bring in the binder, plus however many to bring in petroleum, and my understanding is they're going to use maybe 25% of reused asphalt, so that would also be trucked in. But on a 3,000 day, that's in Ms. Kinderman's, I'm not making this up, it's in her letter, you would have 120 trucks going down Silver Rapids Road and coming up. The ones with the petroleum, the ones with the binder, those will be on the riverside of Silver Rapids. Now, if you've driven, I live there, so I drive that, and let me tell you, when I, I often come back very late at night, and if I come back four or five in the morning, I don't drive more than five miles an hour up Silver Rapids, because half the time, a deer is gonna jump out in front of me. They love that river at night, not during the day. So if you're thinking about starting at four in the morning and running 120 round trips on a maximum production day, you're really putting that river and Stockton's water at risk. And I just wasn't sure anyone had really grasped the numbers, and I didn't hear them say any numbers, so I'm saying some numbers, and if they want to disagree, they can, but Ms. Kinderman's letter of June 24th will say everything that I just said, thank you.
Hello? I just heard that you guys are forced by the city, I mean, from the state that puts down your unified building code, this board right here adopts that unified building code by a resolution. It's not, you're not your code, it is your code. So you guys do it, and the last time, Ray Waller came in down here, I was sitting here, and you adopted with a resolution to accept that code. So that code is yours by law. It's something you accepted.
Not this board, the sitting board there.
Well, maybe not sitting board, but you guys are the extension of it.
Sitting board there. We have two new members.
Okay, well, I'm, well, none of you were here when the last one was adopted, I believe it was 202. But anyway, it's a resolution you guys takes, it is your code, and you will probably be getting, you should be getting one, have already had one, because you guys are running on like a 10-year-old code right now. Thank you.
Vicki Renke, because we have an opportunity to come up and kind of give our final little piece here, we've heard from two different attorneys, and we've heard two different outcomes or two different meanings to what happened today. Of course, you know, we believe that the attorney from Abbott is, is correct, because we've supported Director Myers, Maurer's findings. So, you know, again, you know, just being a normal little citizen and watching what happens, it gets very frustrating when everybody talks about the letter of the law, and if it's not written in there, you can't do anything. I come from a background of common sense, that's why we get so frustrated with government, because there is no common sense left, it's like you can't make a decision based on fact that you hear or difference of opinion. We have two attorneys here, have two different opinions. So now you get to decide, but use your own common sense, use your own judgment. And yeah, you know what, we're not gonna make friends on everything we do, I mean, obviously, I'm not making friends in some areas, but we have to speak our principles, and we have to make those right decisions for our county. Our county is going broke, because we don't allow anybody into our county, and this project, if people are watching, you think another company's gonna come in this county and try to get in, would they see the kind of hoops you put them through? That's how I see this situation, that we're just putting somebody through hoops for what reason. You know what I've, my studies look like, I've given you copies, why we've come to the conclusion we have as an organization. It's fact, we didn't just make it up out of the air. So anyway, I guess I just hope that you guys will use your own common sense and judgment, because you've heard two very different opinions, thank you.
Janice Bassett again. Please consider carefully what you're doing here. M1, M2, if you say, "Oh, it's permitted use by right to have an asphalt plant in these areas," there's no going back. So watch where you're going. And I also want to point out that that intersection on Highway 26 onto Silver Rapids is a very tight corner. My cousin Randy here just said at lunchtime, he has difficulty sometimes getting his motorcycle around that corner without dragging the pegs of his bike. So you picture 120 trucks per day, big trucks, going around that corner, and you think that some of them, at one point, is not gonna fall, and there's a sharp drop off right there on that corner. You think that there's never gonna be a truck that isn't gonna make that turn wrong and fall off the road and onto that house down there. Now you think about that. Excuse me, goodbye.
I have a few things I wanted to mention that came out of the, a few things that I wanted to mention that came out of the community meetings, but before I go there, I just wanted to say, Supervisor Olivera, I hope the fact that you weren't here when they named Calaveras Calaveras doesn't mean we have to go back and rename it. We don't want to go there, we don't want to start over. The goal is to build on, on the expertise and the big discussions that prior boards had, and do better. So, one of the things that was mentioned was that our, our employees all wear these monitors, or once a year or so, but they don't wear them for, this came out in the meeting, in the, when we asked additional questions. They said, "We wear these monitors," and someone asked, "Do you wear them for the aggregate or for the hot batch?" Well, no, aggregate. So they had, they don't wear them, so the results of those don't apply to what we're talking about today. They don't wear breathing protection, they said that, because they don't need it. Well, you know, that's, that's a really bad argument, it's not healthy, and so I, I wouldn't say that too loud if I were them. Also, SEQA, as I understand, would give Calaveras County the authority to hold everyone accountable. Without it, we don't have the documents to hold them accountable ourselves, and we're turning it all over to the state and feds, and when was the last time they really cared about Calaveras County? So, just throwing that out there. And then the engineer's report, I think I'd like you to dig into that just a little bit. It was like 63 pages or so, and as I understand, it did not reflect what was said here today. So I'd really like you to ask someone else who has really dug into that in the audience here, how that came about, or how that read, because there were certain things that they did, it did not address, and they're saying it did. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any more public comments?
Julie Morgan again. After all of this, you cannot get around that that is a residential area, and there's a lot of traffic for that street. And they're talking about the traffic now when the economy is bad. Hopefully, the economy's gonna get better, and then it's, the traffic is gonna be terrible, and it's all open trucks of asphalt, going very close to, a lot of those homes on that street are very close to the road. So I just want you to remember, it's a residential area. Thank you.
My name's John Letson, I'm a resident of District 5, and I hear a lot of talk about this bag house. I have some background, not in the asphalt, but in the concrete and hard rock mining industry, and bag houses remove particulates, not fumes. I spent some time calling around to the current top manufacturers in the United States of bag house systems, and the best one available without extra equipment will take out half micron particles. That's a half a millionth of an inch, and that's 10 to the minus 12 in size. A methane molecule is 10 to the, or I'm sorry, 10 to the minus 6. A methane molecule is 10 to the minus 12, another 500 times smaller than the size that the bag houses will take out. The only way you can get out the rest of the volatiles is to add a scrubber, which is another big piece of equipment, are you adding a scrubber?
I'm around that in California.
Well, they're in all the oil refineries. The other one was mentioned, there's other exhaust that's gonna happen from trucks and so on, and one of these gentlemen talked about the noise from starting up the burner. Now, that burner is to heat up the gravel to between 350 and 450 degrees F, about what you cook a pizza at. So over the year, they're gonna be using diesel, I presume, and they will need to heat up 250,000 tons of gravel to that temperature. Where is the exhaust from that burner gonna go? It's not gonna get taken out by the bag house, not to mention all the exhaust from all the trucks each day. So that is very, to check on that information, it's very easy to find out, go on the internet, type in "bag house," pick out some of the bigger companies that support mines and other industries, and you can call them up and talk to them, and get all this information in a matter of minutes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. I believe this project has proceeded based on somebody's interpretation of what was possible and approval by a Planning Commission and that same belief, but you've got to understand, it has not proceeded based on public opinion or community concerns. I think we've pretty well established, there's many, many more people concerned and opposed and reluctant to be proceeding with this than are supportive of it. Now, I asked at the, the meeting that they had in Rancho about other facilities that Ford Construction is working right now, and I kind of got a weird answer, it was like, "Well, we've got some, but they're not up to code like it would be here." So I didn't get the, the location of those places. I would like to tour one of those places and look at the neighborhood, and see if it's a depressed neighborhood. Has everybody moved away because it's stinking and dirty, or is it a really nice place where people are proud? I want to see where Ford Construction has manufactured asphalt somewhere else that I can go and drive around and ask the people on the block, "How do you like your neighbors?" I bet you we get some very interesting answers. We're getting around to, to the, a topic of trust. Frankly, we don't trust what we're being told. The, the corporations' reluctance to comply with an EIR and a conditional use permit indicates a lack of transparency. So that's why we don't trust what we're being told. They've avoided the due process, which would allow us, before they got the equipment on the site and all set up, because now they're ready to go. Need to prove the safety with an EIR, a conditional use permit, make good neighbors by satisfying our requests, or we will never trust anyone involved in this process. Thank you.
Peter, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Previous speaker, not gonna trust you, but some of the organizations that are in Valley Spring, I'm never gonna trust them either. So, as PR portion, it would've been nice if the board of supervisors, they know this was coming, they would've took a visit to the site, okay? Take a look at it, because some of you knows more about it than George Schmo like me, who lives in a neighborhood, and it would've been, I would've trusted you guys, I do trust you guys, and I do respect you, and I tried to get along with this gentleman over here also, we'll see how that goes. Another thing, maybe somebody from one of these organizations, do they take SEQA more seriously than the state? Because I've been reading up on a couple things that the state and SEQA not exactly agree.
It's the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me, can I finish, then you can answer?
Just, just help me out.
Thank you, okay, okay. It's my five minutes, guy, I'm trying to get my money's worth. A SEQA, a SEQA and the feds are quite different from the SEQA of the state, there's a quite a bit difference of opinion. Next question, as far as money goes, when they sell whatever product they're gonna be selling out of the quarry, is that a sales tax that's gonna go to the county? I presume they collect sales tax, whoever they sell it to, including Caltrans? Okay, the next thing, there was a mention of the signatures, all the signatures were collected. You gotta submit it. It's nice that all these folks, all over the state, all over the county, and some of my client, out of the county and the state, signatures are, and I really appreciate that concern. I really appreciate that contributing all this money for all this legal firm, legal people. I'm impressed, but once in a couple of times, I had occasion to deal with legal firms, they always tell you the truth, and they're always gonna tell you the facts, and each side has, they're always gonna tell you the facts and always say the truth. Yeah, sure, but you have to use some common sense also. I'm sorry that so many people get panicked into it by misinformation in Valley Spring, but I would look at it, and maybe somebody can come up with the facts for all those concerned citizens all over the state, and out of state, that are so concerned about us. What is their interest? I mean, it's really nice that they're concerned about us, but take a look at all those signatures, and how close they are to the quarry, worrying about the truck traffic, the possible noise damage compared to what's reality is. So, I'd like to know answer about SEQA, are they gonna take, they have to take care of SEQA a lot more seriously than the state does, to start with, so there is precedent of a, the state handles SEQA. come back to the community, and maybe they should've invited you folks to come down and visit. Signatures, because the bottom line is, money talks, BS walks, and this, there's a lot of BS going around. Thank you.
Terry Henderson. I was up here earlier and handed you a packet with signatures in it, so I'm coming up in defense of those signatures. If you'll notice the signatures, they're county residents, most of them are from Valley Springs area. There are others who own property in Rancho Calaveras, and they own property in the general area, so they're not all over the state as suggested by this gentleman. So, I just wanted you to be aware that, you know, if you look closely at those, they give their residence address, and they're all county residents of Calaveras. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Tanya Dawson from Valley Springs. And it, there just seems to be a small, vocal, well-organized, well-funded group that likes to stand against businesses that want to come into our county, and they get people riled up against things, if it's a general plan or what have you. And businesses don't really realize, I think, what they're getting into, what they're really up against. I remember O'Reilly's, when they wanted to move into Valley Springs and, you know, every, all the arguments against them and how horrible it was going to be, and they didn't do this, and they didn't do that, and some of them even brag on the number of businesses that they've shut down and, you know, or business propositions, you know, people that wanted to come in, that they got them not to do their business here. And it's, I think that's pretty sad. So, you know, there seems to be a lot of misinformation. People have emailed me, not realizing who I was, asking, you know, what I thought of what was going on with the asphalt company. I didn't know anything really about it at that time, and just with, you know, all the trucks that were going to be going up and down their street and the air and, you know, all kinds of things. And I think it's great that you guys have actually looked into it, you know something about it, and you've done your research, and, you know, that you see a lot of the misinformation that's been out there. Thank you.
My name is Laura Most, and I'm very upset today because we all are concerned about our community. We moved up here fifteen years ago. We consider this our community. I'm out in the public, yes. I'm out there. I'm talking to people. I'm concerned. And when people state that we're just causing trouble, that's very disheartening, because as this gentleman said, you know, we're checking all this out. My husband was checked out with his lungs for years, but the last two years, now he's on oxygen. He worked in the construction for many, many years, and it's very heartbreaking and disturbing to me for all of this to be going on, because I care about this community. I care about our kids. I'm concerned that the, this, people are moving out of this community, and like Terry Henderson said, the schools are, there are more and more kids are moving somewhere else. So, just think truly what you do. It's heartbreaking. We moved up here to make a life for ourselves, my husband and I, and it's just really heartbreaking.
Joe Kelly from the unrepresented area of District One. You folks have certainly confused me in the last twenty minutes. The, when Clyde was up here and was talking about the UBC, and then you folks started saying, "Well, it wasn't us that adopted." So, I have to ask this question. You, this Board of Supervisors, realize your authority and responsibilities based on the last UBC adopted in Calaveras County? You do realize you're responsible, right? I just want to understand that. Not the one before the last one, or the one before that, but the last one that was adopted. Then I'd like somebody to get up and say, "Just what are the benefits to Calaveras County from an asp, pardon me, asphalt plant being allowed? Sales tax on Caltrans jobs? No." So, what is the benefit, other than the roads we're going to have to be repaving at our cost, unless you work a deal out with them? But I'm, I'm not necessarily for this thing without a SEQA. I think a lot of information has been placed before you. Colleen Platt did a real good job when she talks the division of mine information, presented it to you. That put me over the top. But I think you really need to think hard, what benefit does it have to Calaveras County? You already have a number of people, signed documents, and the individuals that have been coming, that say, I think that's what they want to know too. What benefit? Thank you.
Okay. Any more public comments?
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. I don't, the dark glasses didn't work. I was identified anyway. Just to reiterate, the issue, the way we see it, we see it as a property rights issue, and we think that the purpose of the zoning codes, the general plan, courts, Board of Supervisors, sheriff, every, every part of government has the purpose of protecting the rights of life, liberty, and property as it's specified in the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, in Article One of the State Constitution. To us, that's very, very clear. When you get into issues of zoning, issues of interpretation of ordinances, to us, we look back at the purpose. If, if the law would itself harm somebody, then that law is really not following the Constitution or following its purpose of protecting individual rights. So, the question, of course, comes up, what is, how much benefit will the community get with an asphalt plant, or for anything, any other business, for that matter? To us, that's really not the issue. To us, the issue is their rights to be in business. The first question is, are they harming the neighbors? If the answer to that is no, then it's a no-brainer for us, because we're trying to follow the Constitution and recognize the individual rights of the property owners. And I appreciate, not only the work that you've done, but also the work the Planning Commission's done and the Planning Director. This is a big job. Thank you.
Colleen Platt with my Valley Springs again. I wasn't going to get up, but I have to say something there. Property rights go for everybody, not just businesses. They go for the residents who live here. People bought these properties believing, they knew there was a quarry there, they never expected to be an asphalt plant. Asphalt is not in the zoning code. If they did their due diligence, they wouldn't have found that. These are their property rights, just as much as the businesses. That's what our zoning codes are for. The question, does this harm the neighbors? That is what we're trying to determine. Does this harm the neighbors? That's why we want SEQA review. That's why we want a conditional use permit. Listening to the applicants tell you it won't is not the answer. The engineering report is a limited report. It's only studied the asphalt plant site. It didn't study anything else around it. They only measure the air on the site and at the perimeter. They don't measure the air on the roads of the residences. These people live here. These ten thousand-plus trucks a year, there's a potential for a lot, and we can't even talk about that, because they haven't given us the proper numbers. We can talk what we think there might be. There's going to be more than that. But these people that live here are going to be affected by this because of all this truck traffic, the emissions, the fumes, the toxic things from trucks, the potential accidents. You haven't given them a chance to have this correctly studied by environmental review. This shouldn't be a permitted right. Thank you.
Following up on what Colleen has just said, I think the thing that strikes me the most about it is that there's one group who seems to claim that Calaveras has too stringent and unfair regulations placed on people who want to start businesses in Calaveras. I'm under the impression that we have no more stringent requirements than our neighboring counties do. So, if we don't have business in this county because we have, because of the regulations we have, I, I think that is not a true statement. I was on the Planning Commission myself, and many people who came applying for permits with the county said, "What I think is the problem is that it's not clear what you want from us. If you lay it all out in the beginning, we will comply with the regulations, provide you with the information, and then you make the decision." We have just sat here from nine to three, we're only on the first appeal, there's another appeal to be heard before the board, there's two more appeals, I think, to be heard, or no, one more appeal to be heard before the Planning Commission, and if we don't establish a practice, and we have to make decisions on a case-by-case basis, every single time somebody comes into the county, and we run into this kind of situation where people are appealing, and we have to sit here for hours, and everybody has to hire attorneys, and all the people have to mobilize to come and express their opinions, it seems to me it would be much more efficient if we could have a permitting system, if these people are subject to controls and restrictions by twenty-two other agencies. I can't understand why it would be so difficult to comply with SEQA regulations and fill out the forms. You may even get a mitigated negative declaration by the end of it, and we wouldn't all have to spend three sessions of eight hours each to talk about one single project. Are we going to do this for every project in an M1, M2 zone from now on, because we want to give people the right to do whatever they want because they own the property? When we see nine hundred people who are saying, "We feel like our rights as property owners are being denied because of the rights of one property owner," it seems to me that we're trying to run an efficient government that asks the same thing of all people who want to participate. If they can prove that what they're going to do is safe, and the emissions are reasonable, the, the noise, all of the, all of the things which SEQA examines, then they can get the right to go ahead with their project. That's all we're asking, and as I understand it, that's what the question is today. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Hang on, we're going to have time in a second.
Well, I, I just wanted to, isn't the SEQA discussion the next item? Because we're getting a lot of discussion right now, and it will be coming up.
Yeah. So, okay, any other public comments on item number twelve? All right. See you in a minute. We're going to bring it back to, we're going to close the appeal hearing now, and we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion, and...
Before the, the board moves into their, their discussion and deliberations, I just wanted to, because there have been so many topics raised today, I just wanted to bring your focus back and remind you that this is a quasi-adjudicatory hearing as opposed to a legislative hearing. And what that means is that you should be, your role is to act as a neutral fact-finder, applying the facts to the law, and the law in this case is generally, your county code also, to some degree, SMARA. And so, in these types of quasi-adjudicatory hearings, what you need to be focused on are the facts that have been presented to you through this hearing process and the law at issue, rather than general legislative concerns, like the desirability of the, the project and those kinds of concerns. So, I just wanted to make sure that you had that in mind as you were making your deliberations.
Okay. All right. So, we will start. Anybody want to start? Mike? Debbie? Mike? Well, you're usually the starter, Debbie.
Yeah, right. I thought I was the concluder. So, some questions. So, as I understand it, you know, as Peter's Planning Director was within his authority to, to approve this particular permit based on past history of the county, some legislative action, code, et cetera. So, at some point in that decision process, or perhaps afterwards, is there ever a point or in that, I guess, decision process mode, would there have been an opportunity to, to call or request a conditional use permit process?
There is another provision, there is another provision in the code that is not really issued today. It is subject to an appeal by the planning, to the Planning Commission on Thursday that requires review by the county health officer, and if that health officer makes a determination that there may be or is a significant environmental effect, then even if the use is permitted by right in the zone, a conditional use permit would be required. That determination was made after the initial review. I was not aware of that provision of the code when I made my initial determination, and it really, it's related, but differs from what's before you today. And I don't want to get too wrapped up into that issue, because it's, that's not what's being appealed today. It's the determination of whether or not
Right.
this use is permitted under the provisions of the code.
Well, I guess that's where it's real fuzzy to me, because I can see, you know, when I look at the, if you want to take a broad brush, you know, I can see where this would be fall into a permitted use, based on what I'm hearing. But in the back of my mind, because it's not real clear, is, is, if we can have the applicant, or I don't know how it would be worded at some point, but anyway, back to the drawing board, where the applicant would have to, we would require a conditional use permit, because it's not real clear.
I'm, I'm not sure what the question is.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm saying is, okay, if we're, if, you know, if I disagree with the Planning Commission, okay, their ruling, and we, and the applicant comes back to the planning department, at that point, would a conditional use permit be required, if the applicant so chooses to pursue that?
If you, if you reverse the Planning Commission's action, I guess there are two, two ways that you could interpret the code. One is that it's not permitted at all in the zone, or it requires a conditional use permit. If you find that it does require a conditional use permit, then for them to move forward, they would need to apply for a conditional use permit.
Because that's, that's kind of how I'm feeling. It's like, it's not real clear. I, I think it's in there somewhere. It's not real clear, but to further kind of determine, kind of, kind of get through the, all the misinformation, you might say, get it real clear, the conditional use permit process would, would assist in determining, yes, this is, this is permitted.
So, there's, I think the, the point that Tiffany was trying to make is that what we're trying to do here is determine what we believe the board intended when the ordinance was adopted in nineteen eighty-six. You may feel that it should or it should not require a conditional use permit, and that would be a legislative act, that if we, I think we need to change our code so it's very clear that it requires a conditional use permit, or it's listed as a permitted use. That would be a separate action that would need to go through a process of amending the code. That's certainly something that you could direct us to bring back to you, if that's what you felt, but it's important not to try to substitute what you believe ought to be, what the code should say. It's what you think the code does say is what's before you today.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment.
Okay.
My position is, I agree with Mr. Maurer. My position is, I agree with Mr. Maurer. It's what the code does say, not what I think it should say. And based on that, I would oppose the appeal.
You what?
Oppose the appeal.
It's been a lot of information come before us, and also a lot presented. My...
Steve, can you speak up, please?
It's been a lot of information come before us, as well as a lot presented. When this was initially brought to me, like every other project, I listened to the applicant, and I sent it on, and basically let my people that are in charge deal with it, which was the planning director. And when he made his determination, I just assumed the environmental manager would probably turn into some long-run-out process, which, to get it through, and really didn't think much else about it. It really felt like my part in it was done. Janice Bassett is 100% correct when she confronted me. I did refer to Brian Moss, because at that point, I'm not an environmental manager, and I had no intention of becoming one. And really felt like that was where she could get her information, and I was doing my best to be impartial and stay out of the heated feelings that go with this. One thing Tom Infazino brought up was that he compared this to the golf course issue and the shooting center issue. But the fact is, I was on board for both of those to some degree. And the planning directors on both of those items were not wild about them, and they were not in favor of them. And they came forward without the support or, that I can remember, a great determination from either one. When I was told about this project, just as I do with everything, I related everything that was told to me to the planning director. And of course, it's an economic benefit, so I did want it to be looked at promptly with due haste. But that doesn't take away any of the responsibilities that went with it, and neither did I ask for it to be approved. But one thing I did remember when I was talking with those who were putting the application together, and they asked me to do the same thing that several other people have in my district, he showed me a packet, a packet that had a letter in it that was signed by Bob Selman, and, who was the planning director at the time, who kind of gave him a handshake on the asphalt plant. I've worked with Bob Selman on the planning commission, and Bob Selman was not someone to willingly give those type of handshakes. In fact, I'm surprised he was willing to sign a letter like that. So this, this issue to me is not the SEQA question. That's the next one that we're looking at. And that's when some of those things will come into play. This is, did, the planning director have the right to do that, what he did? And I believe he did. He acted in accordance with the expectations that we have of him. So I'm not, I am not in favor of reversing his decision.
Can we go back to the sounding code?
History or the...
The definition.
Definitely.
Or wherever it is.
Chris.
Great. So, you know, to me, this is really the crux of the, of the issue, as is pointed out by county council. What does this mean? And so Peter went back and looked at, you know, the legislative history on this, and tried to sort out the intention. And so I think that, you know, he could have gone either way, really, with, with that definition, because it's not clear. As we've heard, concrete and asphalt are indeed two separate things, two separate definitions. They're two different things. So, but did that really mean that the boards at those times, I mean, what were they thinking? So we, you know, we're really just kind of guessing, using our best guess to know what they, what they meant. And so for me, I'm gonna say, well, this is really unclear, and I, and I understand where Peter came from on this, but I couldn't make this determination based on that and the legislative analysis, that they were really convinced that a asphalt plant by permit use could be anywhere in the county. I'm just, there's nothing, there's nothing clear enough to me that I've seen to say they really meant asphalt plant that we're talking about today to be a permitted use in mining. It's just, it's just not there. So I would definitely side on the error of, of needing to do further environmental review to flush that up. And because I don't think it really is their intent to have a permitted batch plant on any mining site anywhere in the county. I just don't think that. That's way too broad when you think of it that way. So I would definitely be in favor of, of continuing to look at this, continue to do a review on it, but, but for today's answer, we just don't know. And I don't, I don't think it was really their intent that that was a permitted use.
Okay. You wanna go, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
All right. So I spent quite a bit of time researching all of this. And even went to draft EIR from 2012, in, that I found on, on the website near the county. And it does mention asphalt in that. So I can't imagine a, a board of supervisors with this many miles and private roads in our county not expecting a, an asphalt plant to be somewhere within the county. And I can't imagine it being permitted under M1, or anything less than M1. The M2 is the industrial, the industrial zoning for, for that heavy industrial type stuff. And so I think that, my opinion is that the board at the time was probably looking at all of the technologies and the different descriptions of asphalt, cement, concrete, and everything else that, that comes out. If you look at some of the cements that are out there, they have lots of different chemicals and cements, even nowadays, because they're plastic cements and, you know, different, different types of chemicals in almost everything processing nowadays. So I feel that the board probably felt that asphalt would be included in that. So I would, I would vote to deny the appeal for Valley Springs, and side with Peter on his determination. Okay, your turn.
Well, I, I, for me, it's not real clear. I have a hard time, I guess. I think cement, concrete is so prominent because we had such an industry here in the 70s and 80s, which has gone by the wayside. And, you know, who knows why asphalt wasn't as, as planted throughout this particular zoning. So I, I agree with Chris. I'm having a hard time, you know, not, because it's not clearly defined there. And I would, I'm, I'm voting against the, or abstaining the, excuse me. What am I voting for? You guys have confused me. It's been too long. No, I just feel like, you know, that it's just not clearly there for me. And so from a legislative point of view, I guess, I have to support the, the appeal.
Okay. So I need a motion.
I'll sort of move.
You beat me to it, but, but second, that we, what are you moving to, Mike? Moving to deny the appeal. All right. All right, so I'll, I'll spell it out. You guys...
Okay.
So we have before us item number 12. Planning Department recommends board adopt a resolution denying the appeal by myvalleysprings.com of the planning commission's determination that an asphalt plant is permitted use in M2, general industrial zone, that no mining use permit is required to install an asphalt plant at the site of the Holden Quarry, and the amendment to the reclamation plan for the Holden Quarry is not required for the installation of an asphalt plant. And that's what you're, that's what you're, you're voting on, actually. And so, again, I'll ask for the motion.
Do you want to go, Mike, since you're...
Yeah, I, I would move to deny the appeal.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, three to two.
Sir?
We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Sir, right.
Do it all over again.
Susan's gonna close up.
All right. Let's, let's start so we can begin, and then we can get through this. So we're gonna start on number 13. And I will now open the appeals hearing for number 13.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Maurer again for planning. This is the second appeal on the planning commission's action of July 9. This is an appeal by CBS Asphalt and Fort Construction on the determination made by the air pollution control officer that the issuance of an authority to construct is a project under SEQA. This is a very narrow discussion of what is a project, and whether or not the issuance of an authority to construct qualifies as a project under SEQA, and therefore, analysis is necessary before a permit may be issued by the Air Pollution Control District. So a project is defined by the Public Resources Code as an activity which may cause physical change to the environment, and it's one of the following. It's undertaken by a public agency, or it's funding provided by a public agency, and it involves the issuance of a license, permit, or other entitlement by a public agency. We feel that this qualifies under two of those provisions. It's undertaken by a public agency, the issuance of the permit, and it involves the, I'm sorry, no, it involves the issuance of a license to, for construction in CB asphalt to operate, to install the asphalt plant. The SEQA guidelines further informs us as to what is considered a project, and it's when there is judgment used in deciding whether and how to carry out or approve a project, and the exercise of judgment or deliberation when an agency approves or denies activity, the two sections of the SEQA guidelines. And the case law also supports the action that if you have the ability to mitigate the environmental impacts of a project, then that qualifies as having discretion, and therefore, a project under SEQA. So the Air Pollution Control District issues an authority to construct for certain projects, and I will let Brian Moss and Jason Bateser explain the process a little bit more. But essentially, it's required when a business or a person wants to install or construct business or a piece of equipment that may issue air contaminants. It's reviewed by, it's reviewed by the district staff or the contract engineer, and it can be approved, conditionally approved or denied, and conditions may be applied to the project. So in this case, there are, an estimate of the pollution levels are provided to the district. The district reviews the proposal, determines if it complies with district regulations. Each authority to construct is project-specific, and again, the conditions may vary depending on the unique circumstances associated with any specific project. So the Air Pollution Control District determined that it was a project under SEQA, notified the applicant. The applicant appealed that determination. It went to the planning commission on July 9, and the applicant has appealed that determination to you. So we recommend that you uphold the planning commission's recommendation or determination, and that find that the authority to construct is a project under SEQA. Do you have any questions of me? And if not, I will turn it over to Jason or Brian.
I have a question of you.
Yeah?
When this whole process started, do you have a, like a flow chart of when somebody comes in and they contact you with a project like this? How, how does that flow?
I don't have a flow chart of that. The process varies depending on what kind of project it is, who's responsible, what kind of permits are required of the county. Typically, someone would come to the county and ask, or come to planning and say, "Can I, can I do this? This is what we discussed in the previous item. Is this permitted by the zone? We'll make a determination, yes, no, or you need a special permit of some sort." Typically, the process is parallel. We will let the applicant know, you also need to talk to building department, public works, environmental management, because they may also have permit requirements. In this case, I believe the applicant understood they needed to get an air pollution permit from, from the Air Pollution Control District, and they submitted information to them to make that determination.
Because one of the issues, really, is that people feel like they were blindsided by a project, and that it wasn't related to the public property. And I've always maintained that I think we have a good process here. And, and once you go through the process, then all of that will come with it. And, and so, but I just want to make sure. And so if there's something that we need to change, then I certainly would like to, to be able to do that.
That might be off the scope of the agenda.
Yeah, I know that's really on today's agenda. It's certainly something we can bring up in the future and discuss. And if you want us to bring back a procedural...
Well, part of it is the EIR process, or the, or the SEQA, SEQA process. And, you know, they start with you, and then they go to environmental health, right?
Right. Normally, in something like this, where you have the kind of controversial project such as this, it would start with planning. And if there were a requirement for environmental review, we would be the lead agency. We would be the lead department to process that. This is somewhat unique in that, as I determined and you have upheld, that the use itself is permitted by right, notwithstanding a subsequent decision that we made, you know, maybe by the planning commission on Thursday. But putting that aside for the moment, that then puts the authority for SEQA onto the environmental management department and the Air Pollution Control District, because they are also issuing permits. Typically, if you have a permit that's issued by the county, it's, planning takes the lead, and the other departments, other agencies will sort of piggyback on the environmental review that's done by planning for their subsequent permits.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Maurer?
Yes.
Would other agencies' results of EIRs or SEQUAs be brought into play if they apply to a certain project, or they apply to a certain issue? Example, Air Quality Control Board, fish and game requirement, fish and wildlife requirements, Environmental Protection Agency. Could you use the results of that and that, apply that to a ATC applicant, or a issue where this might be? I noticed in our slides, we had a circumstantial, case-by-case thing. Would those, do those results apply to this particular scenario?
I believe so. I think once you open up the SEQA review process, then you need to look at all the potential... potential impacts associated with that. And we would consult with all of the responsible and commenting agencies to see what other permits might be required of them, and to try to ensure that, we only go through the process once. We do one environmental document that's going to be sufficient to cover the entirety of the project.
Okay, would that, would that satisfy the results of a CEQA study? If we had that result from other agen- agencies?
Oh, I see, I used to actually know that way around. If other agencies are analyzing a project, and we find that they've satisfied Fish and Game and all the other, you know, departments, the county still has a responsibility to make an independent determination of whether or not the issuance of its permit has environmental effect. Now, if there is a CEQA analysis is done by some other agency that covers all of the issues, then we can rely on that document as well. So, if a state agency or some other local agency, I worked on a project that was in three different counties, and we determined that one county would be the lead agency, and we all relied on that document. So, it, you can, as long as it covers all of the issues associated with each agency that's relying on that analysis, then that will be sufficient.
Okay, last question. Providing that information is available for the county's responsibility for a CEQA analysis, would it be required by the county to request, or actually demand, a physical CEQA study if they had that information available?
Yes, because part of the, having the information available is also having it available for the public, and that we have to rely on a document. So, just simply that we have a series of analysis done by other agencies, you need to put that together in an understandable and publicly available document for public review and comment. So, unless there was, again, like, you know, some other agency has said, "Okay, we're preparing a mitigated negative declaration," or an EIR, "and here are all of our findings," and we review that document and say, "That adequately covers the concerns of the county, and so, we're going to rely on that document." And when we approve the project, we say, "And we are relying on this document that was prepared by this agency for our environmental review."
So, a CEQA is done by, requested by the county?
We are required to analyze the project.
The information?
The information, you know, related to the project.
And it would make that project conditional to that information?
It could. Again, it depends on what, what the analysis says.
Okay.
You could have a negative declaration, which is basically finds that there are no significant impacts.
Okay.
You could have a mitigated negative declaration, which says there are impacts, but we've identified conditions, mitigation measures, that reduce those impacts to less than significant.
And the county would recognize those?
And so, we would recognize that document that was prepared by some other agency, if that was done.
Thank you, Mr. Maurigan.
Why don't we get Brian up here? And Jason?
Good afternoon. Brian Moss, former Air Pollution Control Officer and Administrator of Environmental Management. And with me today, of course, is Jason Basor, who is your current Air Pollution Control Officer and Administrator of Environmental Management. So, although I would have loved to have handed off this little project to Jason, and just said, "Have fun," chose not to do that, and thought it'd be good fun to sit here and talk a little bit about an authority construct with you, as far as the Air Pollution Control District is concerned. So, with that said, this is more of a presentation, a tutorial, if you will, as to what is an authority construct? What is, what, why we consider this, and the topic is ministerial versus discretionary action on behalf of the district? So, with that said, we'll move forward. An authority construct is an application that's applied for at a time when a facility or a business or proprietor proposes to build, erect, alter, replace, operate, or use any article, machine, equipment, or other contrivance which may cause the issuance of air contaminants. This is right out of our code. This is not something that's a policy. This is right out of our code. What's the first thing we look at? In order for us to meet statutory responsibilities, the district must obtain sufficient information from each project applicant to estimate pollution emission levels and determine if a project will comply with district regulations, part of our review under the Air Pollution Control District. And I will remind, of course, the Board that you are also the Air Pollution Control Board. The nature of information required varies considerably between the various types of equipment, and the processes, and between small and large projects. So, Peter already covered this in his, his presentation, and he just said it a little bit different, and that is, each authority construct is really project-specific. So, very quickly on this, without getting too far down the technological sewer, if you will, on a background, the information is obtained and used, and used for developing an inventory for total emissions. And again, that assists the district in determining and writing authority to construct conditions on the project. Examples include, and certainly are not limited to, the following: identification of air pollution emission estimates and existing stack test data, something you're gonna see a little bit later in this PowerPoint, identification of criteria pollutants, which include carbon monoxide, lead, nitrogen dioxide, ozone particulate matter, and sulfur dioxide, also identification of toxic air contaminants. And it's very interesting that these include over 700 chemical compounds that may have been determined to have potential adverse health impact. So, those are some of the, very briefly, things that we look at when we're looking at issuing a potential authority construct for a project. The ATC application provides information that is designed to assist the applicant. We kind of covered that. And after a thorough review of the application, the district will issue a preliminary decision on whether the application is approved, approved with conditions, or disapproved. And in the case of this project, what we did do is we received the authority construct application, and realized we didn't need additional information, requested that, and additional information was submitted to us back on, I want to say it was June 25th. So, upon approval of the authority construct, facility has one year to build, and this is taken, again, right out of the code, looks familiar, erect or alter machine, alter the machine equipment or other contrivance which may issuance, cause the issuance of air contaminants. And of course, it can be extended beyond a year in cases where additional time is required to complete construction of a project. Not really an issue in this case, but sometimes it's a very, it's even a larger project, and they'll, they'll submit an authority construct application early on in the project. We will give them time, additional time, to actually get that up and moving. So, once a, a construction of a project is, is up and running, it's demonstrated under the authority construct, the source can be operated under the conditions decided in the authority construct, the facility will be issued a permit to operate, or what we call PTO. This permit to operate, which is down the line, not to be confused with today's discussion, does also include conditions, just like the authority construct, to ensure compliance of the equipment. Makes sense? Permit to operate is issued on an annual basis, the facility is also, also inspected on an annual basis, and we also check to make sure they're meeting the conditions of the, that, the, then, now permit to operate. But again, I'm getting ahead of myself on permit to operate. I want to say that Peter also just touched a little bit on 401, he didn't cite it by number, but this is the, this is right out of your Air Pollution Control Board, Air Pollution Control District rulebook that says, "Any person building, altering, or replacing any source of air contaminants shall first obtain an authority to construct." That's the reason we're here today. It's to be obtained from the Air Pollution Control Officer. The authority construct shall remain in effect until the permit to operate for that source for which the application was filed is either granted, or denied, or until termination pursuant to other provisions of this regulation. Again, we're not, we're not here right now. Where we're at right now is, is getting ready to issue the authority to construct. And that's not even the issue today. It's going to be an issue of, under that authority construct, is that a discretionary, or is that a ministerial action? Okay? Nobody's saying that we can't issue the authority construct. Nobody's saying that a permit to operate cannot be issued down the line. Nobody's, nobody's stating that. But what we're trying to state at this point is a discretionary versus ministerial. Why is that important? It's important because discretionary triggers CEQA, ministerial does not. Okay? And that is the topic at hand here. So, very quickly, a project is discretionary if it requires judgment or deliberation by the public agency, in this case, your Air Pollution Control District, or body in approving or disapproving it. And 14 CCR is California Code of Regulations, so when you see CCR, that's what that is. Sure, I'll be aware of that already. So, in order to trigger CEQA, which we've talked a lot about, compliance, the discretion must provide the agency with the ability to mitigate environmental damage to some degree. And what's very important about this, it's one thing to talk about a raw product, it's another thing to say, "We're going to put measures in place to mitigate any potential impact on public health, safety, or the environment." And that, and as a matter of fact, the applicant has done a really good job, is stating, "This is our plant, this is how it works, there's a baghouse in it." Supervisor Olivera spoke a little bit about the baghouse as well, other people talked about that as well, but those are all measures that mitigate any potential impacts, or help mitigate any potential impact on public health, safety, and the environment. So, on to ministerial. This is a project, if the public agency has to determine merely whether the project conforms to applicable statutes, regulations, or ordinances, the agency does not exercise judgment over whether or how the project should be carried out. Predetermined list of variables resulting in a simple checkbox or checklist are an example of that. These types of things that may be answered in a yes/no format may be an example of ministerial action. What came up at the Planning Commission was the Air Pollution Control District, your district, issuing a ministerial action permit for a generator out at Fort Construction, because they are permitted by the district today, and they're also permitted through, or have plans to environmental health. The interesting part of that was, is the inquiry was, "Well, why was that ministerial, and this is not?" Well, ministerial is, again, I'm looking for a checklist, a checkbox, a formula, a, a, a venue, if you will, I can refer to and say, "Yes, it meets A, B, C, and D." And that does exist under the air toxic control measure, measures for generators, as issued by the California Air Resources Board. So, it's a ministerial action. So, when that was brought up at the Planning Commission, I said, "Yes, indeed, that is indeed ministerial. However, an asphalt plant, and, and the review and the conditions are very, very different than, simply, it's greater than 50 brake horsepower, and it's gonna, it's gonna generate so many kilowatts, and oh, by the way, it falls in this category, check, we'll issue your permit." So, ministerial project is one that involves little or no personal judgment, that's pretty clear. It involves only the use of fixed standards, kind of like that authority to construct I was talking about, or objective measurements, and the public official cannot use personal subjective judgment in deciding whether or how the project should be carried out. So, public agencies must determine on a case-by-case basis, and Peter also brought this up in his, his presentation, or through adoption of regulations, as has been done by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And, of course, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's just a little bit bigger than Calabasas County Air Pollution Control District. We're at about 1.75 full-time equivalents. And so, again, that's up to the Air Pollution Control Board to adopt standards by which a district can go ahead and move from something that may typically be considered ministerial, excuse me, discretionary into ministerial, as long as it's put in place, and you can check those boxes if it were. So, again, Bay Area, their projects are ministerial on analysis of their own laws to be applied to approvals. So, their, their, their district board, if you will, approved somewhere in their rules that indeed, you know, for certain actions, and I don't, haven't worked there, so I don't know what those are, those actions are a ministerial action. We see enough of them, we have enough of these widgets going through, through the, through the office, I'm gonna, I'm gonna divert real quick, but it's on, it's, it's, it's an example. When we inherited onsite wastewater, we had all these experimental systems in, in the ground, and it didn't make sense to make them experimental anymore, because we knew that they worked, so we made them just simply engineered. It's the same idea. If we had enough of these applications, it might warrant the Air Pollution Control Officer coming to the Air Pollution Control Board saying, "You know what, we're seeing enough of these, we think we need to move forward and adopt some standards, here we have some templates." Continuing on, the district deems this project to be discretionary, as the scope of the project is very specific, and the district will condition both the authority construct and the permit to operate on how the asphalt plant can be operated to minimize the issuance of air contaminants, which is what you've been hearing all day today. Furthermore, the project also necessitated both a toxic air contaminant criteria and air pollution review. The review for the toxic air contaminants is much less established and requires greater scrutiny. So, this is, this is very key right here. Doubts about whether an action is ministerial or discretionary must be resolved in favor of a finding, or finding that, that the determination is indeed discretionary. So, if you, if you're weighing those two, and we've talked a little bit about that today in the, in the code, about, well, it could've gone this way, it could've gone that way. Again, we're here, but in a different level. You can go this way, and go this way, but the reality is, if there is any, and we don't believe that there's even a question as to whether this is discretionary, but if there was a question as to whether it's discretionary versus ministerial, certainly, we would want to lean towards discretionary determination. So, that was kind of a quick, what an authority construct is and how it works for the Air Pollution Control District. Okay? Questions?
So, if you connect the dots to the prior vote, where it was a three-to-two vote that we recognized, the planning director basically had some discretionary power to interpret, and that's how you're saying this is a discretionary project also?
It is, it's a discretionary act, yes. It certainly is a discretionary, well, this is, this is a little bit more specific, based on technology, obviously, rather than interpreting a code. But indeed, yes, it's a, it's a discretion, discretionary act as to not only what will that authority construct require, but what kind of conditions are we gonna put on the authority construct? How many hours a day can they operate? Maybe the proposal is to start at 4:00 AM. Maybe that's something that's not going to necessarily work, because when you look into this, remember that the Sierra Nevada's drain at night. Your air movement, it was talked about, air movement, prevailing winds moving from west to east. Wouldn't argue that. But what happens in the evening? The mountains drain, so you're getting, you're getting air movement from east to west. Okay? So, does 4:00 AM work? I don't know. We haven't, we haven't gotten to that level, but that's kind of discretionary review and/or that may result in specific conditions on the permit, both for the authority construct and the permit to operate.
Can I also add something to that?
No.
May I, please?
Please do, sure.
Just to take, and reiterate Brian's presentation, that the application that was presented to us, there is... to us, there is some things that are ministerial, but looking at the, if you look at criteria air pollutants, getting into the science of it, and toxic air contaminants, both of which are generated at this site. With toxic air contaminants, we'll, we'll back up, with the criteria air pollutants, there are standards set in place. With the toxic air contaminants, it, there's discretion that staff has to apply in reviewing that to make sure mitigation measures are in place. So, looking at that from just a scientific process of between standards and not having standards, in reviewing those toxic air contaminants, there, you know, staff has to apply discretion in reviewing what the hours used, and, you know, what Brian was just mentioning at the plant, to make sure that there's not going to be significant health effects.
What, got so much going through my head, I forgot what I was going to ask you, but one of the things that it says in the alternatives, if you read it, is, "If the board reverses the commission's decision, finding that an ATC is not a project under SEQA, the APCD may process and issue the ATC. However, further environmental review may be required pending the decision on other appeals before the planning commission, that a conditional use permit is required pursuant to county code." Okay, so if we, that's almost a little bit confusing. If we approve this, then a conditional use permit study will come in, or?
May I clarify that?
Yeah.
There's two different things going on here, and what's not at, at, at the, or before the board today is the health officer's determination that hazardous materials are being used at the site. There is a code section you'll be hearing about in the future, 17042035. It's a zoning code that says if hazardous materials are identified or is being used, and it is, it is reviewed by the health officer, okay? In this case, it's the environmental health officer, and today it's Jay, yesterday it was me, today it's Jason. The, the reality is, is, is that determination is to be applied and reported to the planning department, and it automatically requires a conditional use permit. But again, topic for another day. So that is a separate issue. This is only to discuss the authority construct, and whether it is discretionary and/or ministerial in action. If it is discretionary, CUP aside, okay? It is discretionary, discretionary, therefore, SEQA will apply, and they will need to do, I want to say, and Peter, please jump in if I'm incorrect, or Tiffany, I think that would probably trigger an initial study. Would that be correct?
Correct.
So, that's, that's what that would do. Would that result in a conditional use permit? I don't know. I don't really know. It may require an initial study that could result in a negative declaration, a mitigated negative declaration, or what you've been hearing today, an environmental impact report. That is, that is assuming there are no exemptions. It's not, it's not a conditionally exempt, or it is, it's a conditionally exempt activity, and therefore, it doesn't even get to the mitigated neg deck or the neg deck level. So, really, it's apples and oranges. CUP's over here, but CUP's an environmental review, this is an environmental review, it's just a different path at an environmental review. Tiffany, would that be correct?
Right, I think that's correct. I was going to maybe break down the, the three-step process in applying SEQA. So the first question would be whether it's a project subject to SEQA. And so that goes back to some of the slides Peter had defined, that included the definition of a project, and then the question of whether it's a ministerial or discretionary project. The next question you would go to is whether any exemptions to SEQA apply to the project. Some of those exemptions are set forth in statutes, some are in regulations. And then the third question would be, assuming it is a project, it is not exempt, then you would move to the question of what type of environmental document you would do, and that's when you would do the initial study.
Question, gentlemen?
I cleared it up.
So we have to actually generate pollutants from this activity, correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
We'd actually generate pollutants, air contamination, from this operation that triggers the discretionary.
Well, here's, 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 here's the issue. I don't want to get too far down Bunny Trail there, but to, to answer that question, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to, through a discretionary act, mitigate the, the, the amount of emissions that are released into the atmosphere. That's really the key. Are we saying that there will be absolutely no emissions released into the air, whether they be volatile organic compounds from the burner, or whether they be dust, or whatever happened, fugitive dust, whatever it happens to be? We're not saying that. Our job, in protecting public health and safety, is to help mitigate and contain that, so indeed, there is not a significant effect overall on public health, safety, and the environment.
Because key word, there would be emissions then, right?
Correct.
So if you had a system that eliminated those emissions?
Correct.
That would satisfy that need.
That satisfies the need, and that brings us back to the authority construct. Because the authority construct reviews a project and says, "Okay, yes, indeed, we've reviewed, we've reviewed the plant. In order to make sure that those emissions are reduced, these are the conditions that you will meet, and you must follow under your authority construct, and then eventually your permit to operate, in order to assure that indeed, we're not having an impact." But the bottom line is, again, that's not even, that is the answer, but that's not the topic at hand. The topic at hand is whether we have the discretion, it's a discretionary permit, or whether it's ministerial. We simply say, "Oh, yes, it's fine, we check a box." We do not do that, and that's the district's position, just stating essentially that the authority construct can be issued when it's ready to go, but the authority construct, fortunately or unfortunately, triggers SEQA because it's a discretionary act, in this case.
But if you don't have the emissions?
Correct.
It still falls under the requirement for SEQA.
Remember, if you don't have, yes, because we're going back, we've got to go back over here, before we get to the mitigating measures, it helps reduce the emissions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're still over here, and we're saying, you know, under what conditions, under the authority construct, how do we issue that authority construct? How do we review that? Well, we're reviewing it through looking at the toxic air contaminants, as well as other contaminants, and how do we mitigate those things? Okay? Now, again, it may be hours of operation, in addition to what the plant is. It may be testing the equipment, in addition to what the plant is. Those are all things that are within side of the, the authority construct, that eventually most of which will be brought over into the permit to operate.
Okay. Let me just help be clarified, that the issue here is the process and not the project itself. Is the process that the air pollution control officer goes through, and the district goes through, is that discretionary? Forget about the, the specific project right now. When someone applies for an authority to construct, do we have a process in place that makes it ministerial, as in the case of a generator? We have very clear standards, if you meet the standards, you're good to go. That's a ministerial process. With a, an asphalt plant, or some other larger industrial type of operation, we don't have clear standards in place. And so, in that case, the, the district, the air pollution control officer needs to utilize its discretion in determining how best to limit the air, air emissions. Does that help clarify, or I just might have looked further?
I had to ask, you know, just being new to air pollution, as a new air pollution control officer, I've been working with Brian, you know, for a number of years with air pollution, but called one of the counterparts and said, "What do you consider ministerial? A burn permit. You get it over the counter, and you get issued that permit. You're not looking at toxic air contaminants and other potential contaminants, what Brian is discussing. What would you just consider discretionary?" They laid out some different things, one being an asphalt batch plant, just as an example, but I think in reiterating what Peter's saying, we're really just looking at the decision on ministerial versus discretionary on, on this authority to construct.
Okay, here's my dilemma. We talked about a generator being ministerial.
Correct.
Do we have to measure any type of emissions from that generator?
There are, there are already, those emissions are already calced in the air toxic control measures as issued by the state of California. There are approved generators. They've already been through the testing, in other words. They've, they're pre-approved by-
So you have, you have a list, a list of approved generators?
Exactly. It's kind of like, you know, if we think of underwriters' laboratories.
Okay.
You know, it's, yes, they've already been through, they've already been through the process, if you will. Okay?
So if you applied that to a hot plant that's approved for emissions, does that, is that, we're talking apples and apples, or apples and oranges?
No, 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 no. Because we are reviewing a hot plant that we've never seen before. And, and again, not only are we reviewing a hot plant that we've never seen before, we don't have a standard to go look at, just do a checkbox and say, "Oh, yes, indeed, it meets the requirements, here's your authority construct." We can't do that.
And can I also add to the diesel generators, since we're using that as an example, there's measurable standards for that generator use. With the hot, with the asphalt plant, there, with, because there's toxic air contaminants, those standards are not measurable, they have to be calculated. There's discretion by staff to apply in reviewing those toxic air contaminants. So that's the difference.
Which results in the conditions that will be on the authority construct and the permit to operate.
So I'm looking at this asphalt plant online here, and it has the emission standard on it, so it has measurable.
Right.
Tells you what it puts out.
Right.
Just like you would a generator.
Yeah, but my issue.
Okay, maybe I can clarify a little bit further. It depends on, one of the things we look at is, what is the raw material coming in, in the form of asphalt for the plant? Remember that asphalt is aggregate plus, plus the asphalt mixed together to make the asphalt and concrete. There are different, different sources of that. Most commonly, what, and I don't have that video, that slide with me today, but if you were to look at a refining, at a refinery, and you look at a vessel, and the natural gas is coming up off the top, and you move further down the vessel, and you hit gasoline, and you move further down the vessel, and you hit kerosene, and you move on down on the different petrochemicals that are being pulled off, the remaining material at the bottom of the vat is the asphalt. That's really the asphalt. Now, how much does, how much sulfur is in that particular asphalt that they're going to be using from a particular plant? How much, you know, how much, how many other VOCs?
Benz.
Benzine, right, exactly, is going to be in that particular source. Those are the things we look at. It's not going, getting number two diesel from, for a diesel generator that we can get across the United States. These are very specific. So, that's part and parcel of why we're saying this is very discretionary.
Well, doesn't exhaust from diesel, gasoline contains a certain amount of sulfur, certain amount of contaminants?
Absolutely, but again, but again, back-
Do they use that to fuel generators?
They do, and we do, we do permit those. We do permit those. But again, those emissions, those standards are all set in the air toxic control measures, they're already lined out. It's a checkbox, if you will. You go through and say, "Okay, they're buying a Kenworth 800, and it's, you know, it's 90 brake horsepower, and these are the emissions that are associated with this, and oh, by the way, not only are these the emissions, but the air toxic control measure says, "And these are the conditions you shall put in the authority construct and the permit to operate," unlike an asphalt batch plant, which is very specific.
And I think it's, it's not just the materials, it's the process. So, under the process, you have different air contaminants coming out of the asphalt plant versus a diesel generator. And going back to the toxic air contaminants, which are not where there are no standards, where staff has to apply discretion, and making sure there's no significant health risk to the surrounding community, and that there's, there's proper mitigation measures.
So as I understand it, we heat up a petroleum product in manufacturing asphalt in a closed environmental system. We don't consume it or change a chemical process, we actually heat it up, use that to coat, to coat aggregate that's air dried before it's released into the atmosphere, and stored in an airtight container until it's delivered. So it's the emissions that, that has me confused. And what you're doing with the-
Okay.
-asphalt product used in the manufacturing of-
Well, I, I think-
Asphalt?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I think we're getting a little off topic-
Yeah.
-because I think we're further down the line when you're talking about the emissions. Our job at this point is to review the proposal. The proposal is for an asphalt, is for an asphalt batch plant. One of the things, as an example, we asked for, and was delivered to us on June 25th, was all the MSDS sheets. We didn't even know what they were going to use. Okay? They can use different products, depending on the products, depending on, as Jason said, the batch plant itself, depending on the make, depend on the model, will tell us what we can put in the permit, the authority construct and the permit to operate. That's going to change, as you have different types of plants. Okay? Just like different types of generators have different types of requirements under the air toxic control measures, not all of them are the same requirement. They're different.
We do know that, we do know the type of the hot plant, correct? And with the emissions contamination?
We, we, we-
So we know that, we know that?
We know that, we know that part of it. But the other part of it was, is, you know, what's the fuel you're using? What is the source of the asphalt? You know, what, what, what are the chemicals that you're using? And with that is, comes into play, okay, how do we make sure you meet the standards so you don't emit emissions that are beyond, above and beyond what is allowable by law? And so, again, back to the review, that's our discretion to say, "You know what? Yes, we understand the plant, we understand how it works, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but you know what? We've got that downwind that comes at night, that usually starts at 3:00 in the morning." I'm just throwing numbers out, I don't, but as an example, those are the things we need to look at, and say, "You know, maybe you can't fire that plant up at 4:00 in the morning, maybe you can." But those are the kind of conditions that are in the permit, and those are at the discretionary of the district to make.
Okay, so you're talking about the process of making the decisions.
Right.
Designates whether it's discretionary or ministerial, depending on the information you have available.
I think that would be correct. If I understand that, yes.
Right.
It is a process. This is, this is not about the batch plant, this is about just the process and the review.
Okay. David?
Well, if you're going to have a process and a review, then you're going to have certain standards that you go by, right? I mean, there's got to be a maximum emission that would trigger something, or a maximum this, or a maximum that.
It's what we try to prevent. Try to prevent something going over that maximum.
Correct. Okay, so, so what triggered this?
What triggered this?
Yeah.
What triggered the authority construct was the application for-
No, what, what triggered the, the-
The discretionary.
Yeah.
What triggered that was, I didn't have, at the time, still don't, the district doesn't have a process by which we can look at, at a box, if you will, or a sheet, if you will, and say, "It, it checkbox, yes, it meets A, B, C, and D, and therefore, therefore, these are going to be conditions of the permit." This is unique. So as it's unique, we didn't have the ability to just, like I say under the ATC, I'm just check a box. I don't know if that answered that question or not, though. Jason, maybe you're better at that one than I am.
And because there's discretion applied to the application, that's where we're here at today, because we don't have a ministerial process of approving an asphalt plant. That's, that's, in basic terms, that's why we're here, because the different types of contaminants, and the toxic air contaminants versus criteria air pollutants, and that's how we ended up at this, at the decision we're at today, because it wasn't a ministerial process. We had to apply discretion, and still apply discretion in the process.
All right, so, so then what industry would trigger that?
Triggered?
What are you going to use, what industry would you use it for? I mean, obviously, the asphalt plant.
Well, it depends on the industry and what materials they're using. If we get another application that comes in that has toxic air contaminants, and there's no executive orders, per se, that, you know, this equipment meets these minimum standards, then we'll have to, we won't be able to use a ministerial process, we'll have to go through the discretionary process at that time, until the district, you know, or the state comes up with specific guidelines for different processes. But it's looked at not just by project, it's also looked at by equipment and pollutants that are generated with the project and the process itself. itself.
You know, I think the other thing that was very confusing is that, again, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District was used as an example, and they do have a ministerial, something ministerial in place. And that's why I was using the onsite wastewater textile treatment systems as an example. You know, we had 1,500 of them in the ground. Are they working? Yes. Why are we calling them experimental? Let's take them away from that discretionary review and make it a ministerial review. That was for onsite wastewater. I could see the same thing happening for the air pollution control district here, under the adoption of rules by the air pollution control board. If we had more hot batch plants coming through and, and such, would it make sense to fly something and say, you know what, we're seeing enough of these now, that indeed, you know what, we think we can put a matrix together wherein it's this kind of batch plant, this kind of batch plant, this kind of batch plant. And if you make an application for those, and we can check these boxes off, that'd become much more of a ministerial action. I'm guessing that's what the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has done. We haven't done that as a district, and nor has the air pollution control board done that as a board.
And one of the things that we permit on, you know, 32 gas stations, retail fueling facilities, they have executive orders in place where the equipment is tested by, by the air resources board, and with those, that equipment is tested to meet certain conditions. And so when we get an application, we look at the equipment, doesn't meet the executive order, it's tested, and that would be another example of a ministerial process.
Okay, so if we had a CARB, California Air Resources Board designation on this equipment, saying it meets California standards, we'd fall in that same category, correct?
If we had, if we had, as an example, an ATCM, air toxic, air toxic control measure, am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm getting turned around, too. An ATCM for batch plants. We would have turned to that ATCM for batch plants. Matter of fact, we've been happy to turn to that, to that ATCM for batch plants, because quite frankly, we wouldn't be sitting here today discussing this. In part, number one. Number two, it would have just made the whole path a lot easier for everybody involved. That doesn't exist today.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it, would it matter if it's a batch plant or anything else, as long as there's a threshold for the amount of pollution that it emits?
I think it's less about threshold, and I think it's a matter of, it's more about process. So as an example, Jason was talking about gas stations. One of the things the district looks at are the nozzles at gas stations. Okay? These are approved nozzles by the airborne. Okay? They've gone through the testing. They're already in place. In other words, somebody puts new nozzles down at the gas station, down on 49, we're certainly not going to say, well, that's a discretionary permit. It's ministerial. We know exactly what it is. I have a chart I can go to. It's an approved product. This is the number of gallons. This is the amount of emissions. This is how the return lines work and vent back to either the tank or, or to the burner, depending on what it is. Okay? So that's very ministerial, unlike something that is cutting edge for Calaveras County. In this case, it's a batch plant.
Question. Do we know of any hot asphalt batch plant designation in the state of California that has been termed ministerial?
I, the, the way to answer that would be, I think, is district-specific, okay?
Sorry.
I would say the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, is my understanding, has a ministerial process in place, as adopted by their air pollution control board, that would allow for that to be a ministerial action. But that's a district-by-district thing. So there's nothing coming out from CARB or Air Resources Board like it does for, let's say, generators. It says, here's the air toxic control measures, just follow these, and these are your guidelines for your authority construct and your permit to operate.
That makes sense.
Knew we'd get there eventually.
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
So, what about propane facilities?
As far as-
Emissions.
Emissions, that, Brian probably answered this. I, we, from an air pollution standpoint, they're not listed on the criteria of air pollutants, you know, because they're not, I mean, emitting through a process, you know, in a closed loop system. I mean-
Actually, at this point, I can't really comment on propane, because I'm not even sure that, how those are even treated.
I mean, they're, they're permitted under environmental health for other programs, as for emergency planning and community rights and all, but from the air side, there's no permit requirements for a volatile propane. You're talking different air contaminants and pollutants, processes.
Okay. Any other questions? Right now? Okay. So how about if we move on to?
Can I clarify? I need to clarify. So are, are, this, this appeal today is being heard to the board of supervisors?
Correct.
Okay, not the Air Pollution Control District Board?
It's actually, it's actually the board of supervisors, but you also sit as the, as the air pollution control board, if you will.
Right.
As, as you know, when you open your meetings, your IHSS board supervisor is an air pollution control board. But yes, as the process is concerned, the planning commission's decision is being appealed to the board of supervisors.
Okay, that's what I need to clarify. Then our second is that our focus is on discretionary or ministerial.
Yes, exactly.
And the reason we're hearing it is because we have no real history-
Correct.
-or past practice in Calaveras County, or for this district, which is Calaveras County, that has experience with the asphalt plant.
With, with one exception. The former, former air pollution control officer did issue an authority construct for an asphalt plant in a different area of the county. Why that was done and how that was done, I do not know. But my understanding is, is it was not open to CEQA. But I do not think that that's an excuse for us to ignore what we know the law to be today.
Okay.
We got just raised another question.
So, so then, once we determine one way or the other, if we, if we determine that it's discretionary, then that kicks in a CEQA review?
It kicks in an initial review, which is not say-
Initial review.
Did you hear me?
Right, so, yeah, the question- Or something similar.
Right, whether it's ministerial or discretionary would lead you down the CEQA process.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
How come we didn't request a CEQA review? And was that determination discretionary or ministerial?
Well, you know, I can't answer that, because the air pollution control officer that made that decision is no longer here, and I would love to be able to answer that question for you, but I don't know the answer either. But I do know what, what is before us today and what we have to look at.
So historically, we do have one?
Just one.
Just one.
And the plant was never built.
Okay. Nevertheless, the application was made, and was granted, but we did not require a CEQA based on the air pollution control board's director's decision.
That's, that's true. That, that is true. At that time, and again, I can't tell you why that decision was made, because I didn't have purview of it, so I-
So you know for a fact that we didn't, or the county didn't require any type of CEQA?
I don't know for a fact.
What year was it?
Oh.
2000?
Was it, it would have been early 2000s.
Seven, 2007.
Yeah, so, it was, it was under a different purview, and I can't answer for it. But I wanted to make sure that was clear for the record for Supervisor Ponte, because indeed, yes, we did have an application, and indeed, the air pollution control officer at the time said, yes, we're going to grant the authority construct. There's nothing in the record that says whether they made that determination under discretionary purposes and/or ministerial. It doesn't say.
We learned.
Don't you have any easy things we can judge?
Well, it's easy, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah. All right, let's, let's, is there any other questions, guys? All right, so we, presentation by the panelists?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bill Abbott, Abbott and Kinderman, for Ford and for CB. So I'd like to start with the last topic first, because I think that's the most interesting part of this discussion. What you heard from staff was that we don't have a process to approve these on a ministerial basis. And yet, we know, undisputed, in 2007, the air pollution control officer in this county issued that permit ministerially, no CEQA review. So, with all due respect with staff, I will dispute the characterization that there's no way the county can do it. The law presumes that the county complied with all applicable laws when that decision was made. And all we, all we've heard is we don't know how it was made, but the default legal position is that the law presumes that in fact the county complied with the law. So let's ask the question, what's changed since 2007? First of all, we've got a current plant, not 2007, but I don't think that goes to the legal issue here. There's been no material change in the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA, the guidelines, the case law, except there have been favorable cases to our position. There's been no change, to my knowledge, in the applicable CARB rules. There's been no change, to my knowledge, in your official regulations. There's been a change in staff. That, to me, is the only variable between 2007 and today. It's not as if, as the air pollution control board, you've adopted new rules and regulations that would change the outcome from 2007. It's the same body of law. I mean, I think earlier today, we heard the question like, why would somebody come to the county and do business here? Well, you know, my clients do their research. They know that in 2007, that the county granted a permit on a ministerial basis for an asphalt plant without going through CEQA review, and they know there's been no material change in law. That's why people, so, they've done their due diligence, and they've done their homework. So that's, I think, one of the issues is that there has been a process in the county. And to my knowledge, the county has, either as the board of supervisors, or as the governing body for the district, has not revised its rules and regulations to generate a different outcome.
Sir, I have a quick question on that.
Please.
Thank you. So when you say there's been a process, I'm not sure that there's a process. I think maybe there was a, because a process would mean that there was something in place that this is how we do it, right? A procedure, a process, where in this sense, there is a determination that was made, but no process. So I think that we could say there has been some type of previous example, but not a process established. I think that would be fair. Because otherwise, we'd be able to point to that process, right?
Well, it may be true that there was not a formal process in place in 2007, and my argument is there's no new process in place. We're essentially dealing with the same universe of facts and law today.
But by saying there's no new process, and there is, there was no old process, there's just a determination, I don't see how that really helps us get to any actual solution here.
Well, I'll just offer up the position that one would hope, in the, in private enterprise, that you can rely upon the official acts of the county to provide you guidance. If, if, if an investor in the county has to second guess every prior decision-
Well, no, I understand that. But, but as an investor, if you look at the process like this Bay Area air quality, you can see very obviously, you can probably call it up online and find a checklist of these things we have to go through. If you go to ours, there is no process. So there's a, there's a, I mean, there's one decision that's been made. You're not going to rely your entire business on one decision that, that was made in 2007 over the course of your entire history. It's not, it's not a process. It's not a, I, I mean, I can, you can say it was done once, but I just don't see, and I don't think you would make your decision as a business owner based on that one decision if you, if you did.
Well, all I can say is, I think the proof is in the outcome, and I respect the supervisor's comments about whether or not a process exists or doesn't exist. But let's talk a little bit about some of the issues that have been discussed and the exercise of discretion. You heard the statement that, you know, each of these projects is unique. And we don't dispute that. We, a couple of things. We don't dispute the characterization that these are unique. We don't dispute that we've got to get an ATC. We don't dispute we've got to comply with all the adopted air quality regulations in California. That's, that's really not the discussion. But let's talk about this uniqueness issue. I would argue that when somebody comes in and applies for a building permit for a commercial building, that that cross, that analysis by your staff is considered to be ministerial. It's held up against standards, and it's a unique analysis compared to somebody that comes in and wants to pull a building permit for a house a quarter of a mile away. So the, to me, the uniqueness characterization is not determinative of whether or not you're exercising discretion or whether or not it's ministerial. There was a discussion that there is an ATC that was granted for the generator on the, on the Ford facility. Now, mind you, my understanding, and I'm sure staff will correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not as if the district had adopted standards. What did the district do? I believe the district turned to the state guidance to decide whether or not this was appropriate. Well, our argument, as we set forth in our material submitted to you previously, is that, for example, CARB issues guidance on asphalt plants. So just as staff can turn to CARB for guidance on a generator, we believe staff can turn to the CARB guidance to deal with asphalt plants. And that's a body of law, that's a, that's guidance that frankly, I don't think existed in 2007. Our position, I mean, what we're responding to in this trilogy of applications, requests, permits, and appeals, is essentially a determination by staff right out of the gate. They basically said, in all circumstances, ATCs for an asphalt plant have to be discretionary. And that's essentially the core of the issue that we're debating today. Staff hasn't responded, probably hasn't had time, it's not a criticism, just an observation, hasn't had the time to review the report that was, that was commissioned by the district staff. I'm not an air quality engineer. My understanding is that that report, again, it wasn't our report, it was commissioned by staff, demonstrates that this project commit, conforms to all objective standards that the state has for air quality. Now, under those, under those circumstances, and this is where I think is the critical legal distinction, if the project complies with all standards, which, for the sake of argument, let's assume the state, my statement summarizing the report is accurate, we respectfully dispute the characterization that the district can then add additional conditions. If we are in compliance, the, there is no conditioning authority. The conditioning authority is if the project is not in compliance with applicable regulations. And that's where the, that, I think, is probably the biggest distinction between our position and that of staff. So we are taking, so we are faced with a generic statement that says, you have to go through the CEQA process, it is discretionary. We have responded to the information requests. To my knowledge, the district, and again, not a criticism, probably haven't had a chance to digest all that, but it's our position as of today, the information from that report says that we do comply with all regulations. So our position is that under those circumstances, if you are fully compliant, then there isn't that exercise of discretion. Sure, they have to look at the information, they have to compare it to the applicable air quality standards, but, but, I mean, that's, public officials do that all the time. It doesn't turn every one of those reviews into a discretionary decision for purposes of CEQA. And, and I don't want to discount the significance of the CEQA review process. I mean, I've made, I've been lucky, I've made a career out of it. Don't be misled by, by anyone's suggestion that this will only take 45 days, or 60 days, or six months, or a year. I mean, I don't think anybody can predict that accurately, but I think if you turn, ask staff, planning staff, what their experience was with controversial projects, how long the CEQA process review was, I'll just leave it to that, as to whether or not it's an appropriate question. It's generally a long, expensive process. And what's going to happen in the meantime? Caltrans is not going to stop the repaving jobs. Those trucks are going to come from someplace else. Some other county is going to collect the sales tax, and it is a sales tax collectible product for that asphalt. So, whether or not that's an important issue for the county, that, that's your decision. But there are opportunities to provide that product here, and so unnecessarily getting into discretionary review, there are times when you have to go through discretionary review, I admit that, but- review, I admit that, but unnecessarily go through discretionary review, which is why we're being so adamant in our position, costs business opportunities substantial expense. Now, that may be, public review may be desirable for public policy purposes, but that public policy is not what decides whether or not your decision or the APCO's decision is ministerial or discretionary. So again, I think where we started this conversation was, it's a fairly narrow issue, and I agree, it's a fairly narrow issue. Predetermination that every asphalt plant has to go through SEQA review, we've submitted the material, the CARB materials, and the legal authorities that support the proposition that, under this circumstances, the determination by the APCO that we are in compliance is not discretion. We're happy to defend that position, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Again, we have representatives from Hogan, from the operators.
I just thought it would be important to note that this plant came from Siskiyou County, operating in California. That got an authority to construct and was able to operate without SEQA review, already done in California.
And having represented Siskiyou County for four or five years, including the air district, I would say their body of regulations is probably on par with your district.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
So when you, when you're talking about, like, you can just take it off the shelf, basically, is what we're saying, and, you know, we have this thing that's built, we're going to install it here, and we are going to look at the state regulations, and it's just a checkbox thing, so it's ministerial. So how does that, how does it relate to the specific site, though? I mean, because each of these issues, I mean, each of these plants, like Siskiyou County, although, you know, there are some similarities, it's not, you know, this quarry, it's not surrounded by this neighborhood, doesn't have these wind conditions, doesn't have the, you know, it's a different site. So you're going to have different types of things to look at because of this different site location. So to me, you're going to want to have some type of review, and that's where it falls into discretionary. As much as you would like it not to be, there's going to be questions that have to be answered in this because of the site, so I don't know how you respond to that.
Well, with all due respect, and just to parse the words here, I don't think the test of discretionary and ministerial turns on whether or not additional review through the SEQA process is desirable. It's a legal question, it's not a referendum to the general population, it's not a popularity question.
I'm not saying desirable. What I'm saying is for the air quality pollution control board or officer is required to look at that and really examine that. And there's going to be questions that arise out of that. And when those questions arise, it's no longer a ministerial process, it's a discretionary process.
Well, and we're, and this discussion is somewhat in the abstract because we don't have that decision to review. And again, let me just, if I may summarize, my understanding is that this air quality report that was done by the specialists looks at all the generation equipment associated with the proposal, and concludes that this project, and I'm not quite sure, I won't pretend to tell you what the breadth of their analysis is, other than it's an air quality analysis that's specific to all the equipment. And that report says this plant will operate substantially under all applicable regulations. And our position is, which is separate from your point, is that, under those circumstances, the conditioning authority does not kick in. It may exist to say you have to comply with the rule, but if we're already in compliance with the rule, the addition of that condition does not add meaningful discretion under the California Environmental Quality.
But how do we know that what you're saying is actually qualifying under those rules?
Well, again, I think to some extent, we've got almost a little timing problem because what we responded to was a statement, a determination by the APCO at the early moment saying, you have to go through the secret process, before they got all the information. If we didn't file that appeal, and we then wanted, and then we got into a dispute over whether or not we had to go through discretionary review, predictably, the argument's going to be, you've waived it, because we've told you, the clock runs, you have to make a timely appeal. So to some extent, our pathway was determined for us in advance of having all the information in there. So...
And the other question I would ask, I mean, I do understand the desire to get past this, so you can expedite the project, that's understandable. But comparing a building permit to this type of plant, I think is probably comparing apple and oranges, when it becomes, I mean, because we have building permits, I mean, ideally, we have a lot of building permits every year. We've had one in 2007 that we pointed to, batch plant. So there's no way to compare a building permit process to a very unique, almost extraordinary process that we're going through here, witnessed by the hours and hours and hours we've been here, and all the processes. Obviously, is not a mysterious little project, as much, or process, as much as we or you would like it to be, it's obviously a project under SEQA, just by the uniqueness of it in our county and the fact that we don't have a process. So what I would suggest is that you guys, you know, take a step back and reevaluate your PR and your cost benefit analysis, and go ahead and do a CPU, a conditional use permit, and get everybody on board with you, rather than trying to jam us through like this. I just think this is, I think it's politically, you're making enemies where you could make friends. I mean, people want jobs in this county, and what you've done in this process is you've created division. So what I suggest is, is you pull it out, pull it back, instead of fighting, work with the community on developing a conditional use permit, spend a little extra time, you'll get everybody, this whole board, this whole county, for the most part, on your side. So anyway, that's my...
I respect the vice chair's assessment and position, but if I... But, and to be clear, I was not suggesting that the APCO's review of applicable air quality regulations is equivalent to the building department administering a building permit. What I was responding to was the statement was how unique these were, and I would suggest that if you compare building plans for a large commercial building to the construction of a single-family home, you'll say, these, there's a lot of differences between the two. And that was the only point I was trying to make. So anyway, thank you for your guidance. And again, happy to answer your question.
I do have one quick question. And early in your presentation, you made a point of law, which indicated that if something wasn't listed, just by law itself, you must interpret that as to be valid. I think it was discretionary versus ministry. I'd like to get some advice from our council on that. Do you recall what I'm talking about?
No, I'm trying to follow your question.
Oh, I totally lost you.
I believe, I'm sorry for jumping in, but I believe I can answer that. I think what Mr. Abbott was stating was that, since there was a batch plant that was approved as an authority construct in the past, would be inconsistent, we are being inconsistent, that would have, at that time, would have met the law, and specifically, and is absolutely correct in stating that no new rules, interpretation of the law, or, excuse me, no new rules for CARB, for SEQA guidance, I would certainly agree with that. But what has changed, and you are correct on this as well, Mr. Abbott, and that staff did change, Air Quality Control Office did change, what also changed is a closer look at the law and the SEQA laws to determine indeed that this was a discretionary act rather than a ministerial act. And that is what has changed. So I don't know if that really answers the question, but that was the example given. In other words, it was approved in the past, it should, it was approved in the past, nothing has changed, it should be approved today the same way. That's how I heard it.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Is that correct?
Mr. Moss's characterization is correct.
So both are correct.
Well, so what Bill Abbott is saying is that this is how you did it in the past, nothing has changed, so this is how you should do it now. And what Mr. Moss is saying is that we are looking at the rules that apply. We believe it is a discretionary permit, so we're not sure why it was done that way in the past. So that's what he's explaining. That's what has changed. This is how we're looking at the rules now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can perhaps follow up with the question. Perhaps what I was alluding to is that, under some, what SEQA allows you to deal with ministerial actions, two different ways. One is you can adopt a broad rule, for example, like the AP, the Backmed, the Bay Area, Air Quality Maintenance District has adopted a broad-based rule with respect to hot plants that are ministerial under specified conditions. That's one way to deal with exemptions. But the guidelines are very clear, you can deal with exemptions on a case-by-case basis. So the fact that you, as the district, have not adopted a formal rule on ministerial does not preclude the board, and I can't remember now if you're the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Directors of the air district, or both acting at the same time, doesn't preclude you from reaching the correct legal conclusion as to whether or not it's ministerial or discretionary. So that's the point, is that you could do it by rule, you can do it on a case-by-case basis. The SEQA guidelines accommodate both outcomes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do, a point of clarification. When you, this is a project to construct, and then you have a permit process to operate.
Correct.
So is the SEQA cover both at this, for this particular project?
Yes. I mean, yes. I mean, we're saying that both, both the ATC and the PTO are discretionary in action. That's what we're stating. So yes, it covers both.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. So we go to presentations by the members of the public, please.
Broadcast this again, Valley Springs. Two comments and a question. We just heard reference to 400 trucking jobs. Last week, I believe, I heard reference to 300 trucking jobs. Now, my math is pretty good. If you had just one guy working one day a week, and there was 80 trips a day, that would mean, there's your 400 jobs, but they're all just working one day a week, and there's 80 back-and-forth truck trips a day. I don't see how we get to that number, 300 or 400. The company they intend to use, Paul Vaz, has listed as their employee roles, they have it listed 25 to 49. So I'm really unclear where that 400 comes from. If you had 400 each work doing two trips a day, five days a week, my God, can you imagine how many trips back and forth there would be? My math isn't that good. Number two, and this is kind of directed at Mr. Olivera, because you asked a question about Emschah in the last round. And I just want to point out as a fact that the testing that was done in Siskiyou County was done by the owners of the portable batch plant that's being leased. That's Eagle Peak Mining and Paving or Paving and Mining. And they were censured by Emschah in 2012 for the death of an employee at their facility that I believe their facility was in Alpine County. And they were found to be negligent in that. They were given steps to take to correct that. I simply bring it up because you asked the question before, and it popped into my mind. Now, my question is this. I've heard reference to some letters or permits between Ford and previous planning commissioners, one of which was signed by somebody that one of you knew, that I think are being cited. Are they a matter of public record? And if so, where would I go to make a public records request to see those letters? I believe, I've heard that one was 1993, that was 2003, but then I just heard the gentleman here mention 2007. Does anyone know if the matter's a public record?
The authority to construct in 2007 is a public record under the Air Pollution Control District.
Okay. And the other two, they're matters of public record, same place?
Same department.
Same department. Thank you very much.
What was the authority to construct for?
It was for an asphalt batch plant.
At all Rock.
Peter, gentlemen, this discretionary and ministerial pay above my pay grade. You know what equipment you're going to have. You know the personnel that would do it qualified, because it's some higher authority, EPA and APA, whatever else they call themselves. Simply put, if I have a car, bumper, seatbelt, and so on, I'm going to take it down to get a smoke check. I'm going to have to run it. If it's not running right, no license, throw it back. If you, somebody will think that you ever going to have everybody on board, that's a fantasy. And this ideological power has nothing to do with this thing. That's reality. If you don't like what happened 10, 20 years ago, tough shit it's give. Now, you made a promise, you made a contract, they abide by that. There's no big change has been made, that's my impression, is what SEQA, as far as what has to be done. The Board of Supervisors, who are happy to occupy at that time, okayed it, they complied with it, now they exercising it, there's no... Okay. Please correct me in English, so I can understand it.
The 2007 permit as... Go ahead.
Well, to correct that, 2007 permit was not for Ford, it was for a different plant. It didn't go to the board level, it was merely an authority construct.
Yes.
It was issued, permanent copyright was never issued because they never followed through, but it wasn't with this group.
Okay. No, I'm not going to ask them, I just ask you. The bottom line is, they exercising that they want to do something, it was approved under those years, whatever they applied for was approved, correct? Now they're going to want to apply it. You know equipment's going to be used? You know the personnel will be used? If they're willing to gamble, you're always going to have an authority, hey, roll it up, get it out of here, because it doesn't comply with the present rules. Simple. And I don't think about it, it's above my pay grade. I think these guys are smart enough to know to comply, go through all the PS that they have to go through to run this plant. They're not in a PR business. These folks are. If you're going to change rules, if I buy a property, and whatever I'm going to do, I got permit for it, you give me a permit, and then you change your mind down the road, but because of whatever political ideological reason, you can't run a business like that. Put a time limit on it in the future. And for what it's worth, if there was a mistake made back a long time ago, the same similar situation was a couple of days ago, when somebody came up with, hey, I got the permit, but we changed that, and so on. You can't run a business, you can't run a politics, you can't run this economy in this county. If they not complying with health and safety standard, to please APA and EPA and whatever else you want to come up with, Mr. Moss and you guys would shut them down. Very simple. And I don't think these folks would gamble that kind of money and not comply with the required condition and conditions. Whatever it is, he can monitor it.
30 seconds.
So, and you're still going to get a big stick. If they screw up, you're going to shut them down. And I don't think they want to shut it down after they put that kind of money into it. Thank you.
I have to say that after this meeting on this topic, I'm still confused. I did sit through the hearings at the Planning Commission on July 9th, and I want to shed some light on something because I left there not understanding the vote that was taken by the Planning Commission, and I'm thinking, they might not have understood the vote that they made at the Planning Commission. I'm just saying. So I want to explain why I feel that way. So, I want to explain why I feel that way. When this came before the Planning Commission, this item, Appeal of the Calaveras County Air Pollution Control, that the California Environmental SEQA applies to an application for authority to construct for an application plant at Hogan Quarry, that's the question. I don't know anything about ministerial or anything. So, that's what it was, getting a authority to construct. So, there was a lot of discussion. And the other thing was, it was combined with another appeal by the Calaveras County Environmental Management that they're going to hear this Thursday. And the reason they're going to hear it this Thursday, because it wasn't noticed, and so they couldn't act on it. But it became this combination of discussion between these two things, and they were told they could not talk about County Code Section 1742-035. That's coming up. I guess I shouldn't tell you anything about that because you're not supposed to know. But, at that meeting, those two things were getting mixed up. They even had to take a break for County Council to have a discussion as to what was really happening. And so, all of a sudden, there was a motion to make a vote, nothing was repeated, there was no repeat of what they were voting on. And they all voted yes. And because I heard all the discussion that day, I'm thinking, what did they just vote on? Because it didn't make sense as to what was being presented by Ford Construction, what the arguments were on the other side. So, when I saw this on the agenda for this meeting, it really actually confused me. So, I guess one of the things I want to say is that Calaveras Republicans are asking the Board of Supervisors to support the appeal of Ford Construction. Because of all the things that have been said, the studies that I presented to you guys to look at, again, for us, there shouldn't be any question about whether there's damaging air pollution that will harm people and the environment, because that's been studied and studied and studied. It's been regulated, regulated, and regulated. You've heard from Ford Construction all the things they have to already do. So why duplicate it? And the only reason, I'm sorry, is to delay it. Why do we do that in this county, delay projects unnecessarily? And I think what Peter said about if they do violate something down the road, somebody's going to shut them down. One of those agencies will shut them down. So, I just wanted to make that comment. I don't know if you've talked to your appointed Planning Commissioners to find, if they might have mentioned that maybe they were confused about the vote? Because I was surprised that this actually had gone through with a 5-0 vote. So, again, what we're supposed to be looking at today was the authority to construct an asphalt plant is a project under SEQA. To me, that means if this passes from this board, that they are going to have to go do SEQA. Start over, from square one, it could be, and that was one of my questions, how many years does it take to do a SEQA? And I guess it sort of got answered, it could be years. So why would we put somebody through that when we already have information? And just real quick, the idea about the Bay Area Air Control Board?
30 seconds.
Okay. We all know that, they're very strict. I mean, I probably would disagree with most of the things they would do, and they have a ministerial process for asphalt plants. I would guess why is because asphalt plants are non-polluting. They've been regulated to the point where they're not an issue any longer. You saw the EPA report, there was another report that I found, and it was from the California Air Board, and there was an exemption under regulations for energy efficiency and co-benefits, exemption for asphalt plants, because they don't pollute. And I think, you know, I hope you keep that in mind when you make these decisions, because it just prolongs an applicant for no reason, and discourages other people from coming to our county. Thank you.
My name's Terri Henderson, and I am a Calaveras County Republican. I do not believe and agree with the facts that they're trying to present here as a Republican Party. And I'm also a Calaveras County taxpayer, I live in this county, I pay taxes, I don't agree with Calaveras County Taxpayers Association. I believe that this should require a SEQA review, and the reasons are, is because this is not the same location as the asphalt plant that was previously being reviewed back in 2007, or wherever that was. Our geographical location is different. We have an asphalt plant that sits on a hill above our water supply, the water that services my home, and the homes of many of these other people who came here today. We have concerns. I know Ford Construction done some fast talk and got CCWD to sign a contract with them. Hopefully, it's honored. Stockton East Water District, although they have 56.5% of the water rights to Hogan, were not even given that right. But, there's a lot of things to be considered here. Why we need a SEQA review? For one thing, we were told the hot asphalt mix would be coming in daily in trucks to and from either Richmond, California, or Elk Grove on our highways. Our highways are very narrow, don't have a lot of room for, to get off the road if, say, somebody's crowding you over. That's a concern. Anyways, okay. The Calaveras River below is a natural trout lake, and is also in a drumminous fish habitat. And so, therefore, it has some protections from the state, as far as that goes. I know they're saying that they're going to have all these provisions in place to catch all the rainwater, but we all know the rainwater runs downhill, and when you're on top of a hill, you can't catch every drop. So, that's a concern. And as far as air quality, I believe that Peter Maurer made the right decision in saying that we need a SEQA review. And if a company comes into our county and wants to skirt around our laws, then I would say, let's be skeptical. We should not have somebody come in here and dictate how we operate. They come in here and they follow our rules. So, that's all I have to say.
My name is Laura Most again, and I'm a Republican, been a Republican for many years, and I do not agree with the Republican, she's saying that it's all of us, it's not. And also, I gave you all a packet, and seriously, seriously, Dr. E is my husband's doctor, he's our family doctor, he's talked to us immensely about this. Read that, read his letter, and it's very serious. I don't care what, you know, it's serious for our children, our old people. We have a lot of senior citizens in this county, and will they stay here? We don't know. But seriously, look at Dr. E's letter. Thank you.
My name is John Letson, I'm a resident in Calaveras County, and listen, I misunderstood on Mr. Olivera. Do you understand when the asphalt product comes to be mixed with the gravel, it shows up in the truck at 500 degrees, it's not heated here? Did you understand that?
I'm very familiar with the process, sir.
Oh, okay, I just, I misunderstood what you were saying then.
Very familiar with the process.
No, no, that's fine. And then I had another question. CB said that all their employees live in Calaveras County.
They have the majority, sir.
And how many would that be?
Our total employee right now, about 23.
Now, is that for Ford, or is that for CB?
That's for CB and Justin Barrows.
Oh, really? Okay, thank you. And one comment, up until now, Ford has been a very good neighbor. I know a little bit about the business they're in. And I live, I can hear their guys up at the afternoon talk when they bring the equipment up at that little place up there. And so, I am that close, and they've been a very good neighbor up to this point. And what Mr. Wright said, if there is a way that we could all back up, these people commit, make their commitments, you know, and solve this pollution thing, and I encourage everybody to read up on bag houses, excuse me, and call these people up, tell them you want to buy a bag house. What will it do? What equipment do I need? And that's the best source of information on whether this is polluting or not. And just tell them you're in the asphalt business, they're not going to know who you are. So, been a long day for everybody, and thank you. This is my first time here, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming too.
I was kind of concerned that Ford and CB do not have a facility anywhere in California that we could go and check out. So, to me, it seems like they're maybe looking at Calaveras County as kind of like a guinea pig, a way to get into California because of our strict standards. And if we don't exercise due diligence, they may weasel in without all the proper procedures and permits and things that are necessary to make the community where they're going to be in production receptive to them. To me, it sounds like they don't really give a poop, whether we like them or not. I think that's very important. I didn't move away from Los Angeles to come to a county where nobody cares about each other. I came here because I thought there was going to be camaraderie, there was going to be a way of looking out for each other. We look out for our neighbors, and we look out for our family and friends. So I'm hoping that the Ford and CB, or BC Company, will take it to heart that we're looking for assurance, and that may come through an EIR and a SEQA, that may be how we become more receptive. Gosh darn it, right now, there's just so much animosity, and resistance, and skepticism, and paranoia, that as was suggested, to stand back and look at what is necessary to make yourself a good neighbor in our county. So we will be happy to have you here. I told you last month about two friends of mine that worked in asphalt. One of them has pancreatic cancer now. He worked with another gentleman in Caltrans who died of pancreatic cancer a couple years ago. My other friend suffers from tremors and neurological diseases, neurological condition. Him and his father owned an asphalt paving factory. Those are the days when people didn't take precautions and wear a lot of protective gear. Maybe they're taking better care of themselves now, but both of the people that I'm talking about quit the industry 20 years ago, and they're suffering the results today. I talked to my friend in Hot Springs, South Dakota, who told me two months ago that he had two to six months to live. I talked to him last week, and he's still alive. He says he's doing real poorly, he can't even go camping with his dogs, because he can't leave the house. I think exposure to whatever is in bitumen, or the toxins in asphalt are cumulative, and show up later in life, maybe not as an exact disease, but will interfere with reproduction and sterility. As most toxic chemicals have been proven to cause cancer, I think this is a very tricky slope we're walking on here, and before we commit hundreds of people in Rancho Calaveras to breathing what they probably don't have any desire to breathe, we need to take a real close look at this, and remember that the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors are making these decisions. We hope you're listening to the majority of the people that come and talk to you, and it's not a handful of people, it's not a few people that are objecting, it's the majority of the people that live around here and want to keep living, want to continue to live. Thank you.
Okay. More public comments?
Joe Kelly from the unrepresented area of District 1. This whole discussion is about equipment, 2007, eight years old. Nothing's been mentioned about, really, that. Let's look at it. The age of the machine, if never used, would beat the state's information at the time. That's what they're telling us. They haven't told us, does the equipment get old, wear and tear, that could change emissions and other environmental concerns? Does the state continue information on used equipment standards that takes into consideration wear and tear, replacement parts that would make it conform to 2007 or current standards? We're talking about machinery. And how often do they have to change pieces of parts on it, either through wear and tear or to meet emission standards? Thank you.
Marty Crane. Well, I think it's pretty darn obvious that we have a lot of questions, and a lot of things to use your discretion to determine. And so, I think the thing we want to, we need to decide now is, is it ministerial, or is it discretionary? And the word discretionary does not apply to your decision, it applies to their action. Is that correct? So, once you have decided that there is no checkbox, there is nothing in place for you to check off the boxes, then it is not ministerial, it is discretionary. Which means that it's your discretion, not yours. So, you just have to decide, is there a box with places to check? A paper with little boxes to check on? No? Well, then it's discretionary, and then we all get to go home. Thank you.
I think Marty gets better every year goes by. It's pretty a hard act to follow. I don't know about checkboxes, but I do know I'm partly responsible for the miscommunication and the fear that went into this thing at the beginning. I came aware of the asphalt issue by reading the paper. Normally, I'm pretty skeptical, but this article I read was so, actually was so frightening, that I figured, there's got to be, with all the smoke, there's got to be fire. So I sent an email to our health person, and basically asked, is there some sort of process to assure that the environment would not be hurt? And he sent an email back indicating some of the things that he was working on or doing. Then I looked into it further, I couldn't get balanced information, and it turned out, I'm not the only one that screwed up here. The contractor did too. When the media contacted him to get balanced to the story, so all this wild accusations wouldn't really take root, they wouldn't respond. They wouldn't respond. So the media, having only one half of the situation, one half the scare stuff, it continued, and with an ideological and organizational structure, it just took off like wildfire. The saving grace in this whole thing is that the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors kept cool heads, and tried to constantly look for the facts, look for the facts. And I think that's what the Taxpayer Association would expect, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Good afternoon. I'm Hundi Dawson from Valley Springs. And SEQA is a huge problem, and it needs to be redone. It's just, it's just a big mess, and it causes a lot of red tape, and there's already so much red tape, it's impossible much red tape, it's impossible these days almost to start a business and to get into this. I can't even afford to start my own business that I'd like to do because of all the red tape and state regulations and local regulations and it's just ridiculous. And so it sounds like this project conforms to all the standards and regulations and that you can extend an exemption. Many of the allegations that have been flying around are, seem to be based on just fear mongering and all of this talk of cancer and death and pollution and everything and from everything they've described, it sounds like they've got that addressed, very well addressed. And there's already processes in place if they are out of line to stop it. So I'm just speaking in support of the asphalt plant and hope you support them too. Thank you.
Any more public comments? So now we have rebuttal by appellants?
Do you have a couple hours?
We've taken that.
Thank you for your willingness to sit through lots of testimony today and into the evening. I think probably the most, the one point I'd like to make.
You act like it's been a long day.
Well, you've had to do all the hard work. Now I think probably the most important point is our interpretation and we've submitted all this information, so I'm not going to repeat what you already have. But I think one legal issue that needs to be addressed is the circumstance under which a proposed plant complies with all applicable regulations. Now, to some extent, we're a little bit ahead of ourselves because we're dealing with the theoretical ATC question as compared to the as-applied and until staff actually responds to the air quality study, we don't, I'm not going to predict how they're going to respond. But I think the point to be made is that, at least it's our interpretation and we've supplied the authorities, that under circumstances in which the plant complies with all applicable regulations, that's the hypothesis for this discussion, with all due respect with staff, we don't believe they have additional conditioning authority. And so their theoretical ability to condition or their ability to impose a condition that simply relates to what your standards are and the state's standards are, we don't think triggers the kind of discretionary review. And we cite the Health First case in our materials, which stands for the proposition that if you're applying standards, which we think we comply with, the fact that there may be minor conditioning authority that relates to those standards doesn't trigger discretionary review. Very technical legal question, but I just got to make sure that that gets made on the record. Thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, again, we have representatives here.
I just thought it'd be important to add that there was a couple of comments made about Stockton East not having a voice in this. We sat down with CCWD early on and had a lot of great conversations with them. In that room was Stockton East. When we reached our agreement with CCWD, we have also reached an agreement with Stockton East. We just don't have the signatures on our agreement, but you know, we've made the good effort for that. So it should be forthcoming. We thought we'd have it done prior to today, didn't quite make it. I also wanted to add that, you know, we have 180 more years life expectancy at this facility. We've been a good neighbor. It doesn't benefit us to not be a good neighbor and all I could say is, we're going to do everything we can to satisfy our neighbors' concerns and you know, that's, we have nowhere to run. I mean, we're here for the long haul. So, do you have any questions with me?
All right. So staff rebuttal and summation and rebuttal?
I would just, I would just comment that once again, we're not talking about whether or not, I think there's been a lot of confusion about whether this plant is something that can or cannot be used or does or does not meet emission standards. What we're talking about is, does the district have the authority to say either this is discretionary or is this ministerial? So it's, from a district standpoint, it's not pro and it's not con regarding the plant. This is a simple matter of process at this point. I respectfully disagree that because the plant meets or can meet air pollution criteria, therefore is a ministerial action under the review. I disagree with that. One of the reasons an engineer reviewed it in the first place. One of the reasons we didn't go to a checkbox within the district and say, oh yes indeed, the emissions are A, B, C because it's a power plant number 800. It's not what it is. So I would also agree that Ford has also been, you're hearing that Ford has been a good neighbor. The Air Pollution Control District has regulated Ford for a number of years. Ford will recall the previous air pollution control officer. And the truth is, from a regulatory standpoint, they've been a good company to work with. Okay? If there's an issue out there and occasionally get a complaint of something, nothing to do with asphalt, we'll go out there and most of the time, it's not an issue and if it is, we have to fix it and they're always on it. So I would just, I would just concur with what people are saying as far as that's concerned. Again, back to the issue at hand today. The district has determined, council has confirmed that the ATC is a discretionary action and so has the planning commission. So that would be my comments. Jason, do you have any?
No, I think you summed it up well, Brian.
Okay, so we have another chance for the public to, for everything that came up, you can come up and speak again? Any rebuttals by the public? I know, I'm just following the steps here, okay?
Vicki Rinkie. Again, we have another opportunity, so I just want to restate because you've heard again what Ford Construction's attorneys have said about it, the reading I've done. I find that their reports are very factual and I want to restate that the Calaveras County Republicans asked that you rescind this, their vote and not cause more time and energy put into this process. So I just want to make sure that was clear. Thanks.
My name is Laura Most. It's very disturbing to me that Ford Construction says they're good neighbors. We found out in a flyer in the Valley Springs news. That's very disturbing.
Yeah, I'm just going to say to that also, I live right across the street from the quarry. I hear them dropping the concrete every day and actually, I don't hate it at all. It kind of sounds like thunder rumbling through the valley. It's kind of magical. However, all of our, all of our mailboxes, most of us on the street, there's about 12 mailboxes, they're all in one place and we walk down to get them. And I just can't for the life of me figure out why they didn't, when they thought of doing this, why they didn't just stop by on their way home from work one day and stick a flyer in and say, we're thinking about putting in a hot asphalt plant. You might be wondering, what is a hot asphalt plant? They could have framed the whole debate and instead, the way we found out just makes it looks like they're trying to go around everybody. Might not be true. I've had conversations with Nick, I found him to be a great guy. As I say, I don't have any problem with the quarry that exists. I bought it knowing there'd be rock. I didn't know about the dynamiting, but it's only a couple times a year. But this is something different and they really handled it badly and it's tough to get past the way they handled it to saying now, yeah, I trust them. But honestly, if I'd started with a flyer in my mailbox and had a chance to say, yeah, what is it? It might have been a whole different story, but at this point, I can't say, okay, I trust them because they didn't show that same trust to us and we're right there. They can't miss us.
Peter Ray, General In. Too bad some of these folks didn't put that much effort into it when it was originally went through the process back eight years ago. There should be more people showing up to these wonderful meetings and question it. There's some, a lot of fears and misinformation was put out and oh my God, this is going to be the end of the world. I'm more concerned if my diablos ever going to erupt or an earthquake going to come. I got 30 seconds to swim the shore from the Bay Bridge, but there's always going to be somebody who's not going to like it. And you're not going to please everybody all the time. All you can hope for is please most of the people most of the time. And I appreciate all these concerns that they get it from all over the state and outside of state and some of this stuff is financed. Follow the money. Source of the money, who's got to gain, who's got to lose? And it was one of the consent calendar items, if you recall. It still stands. You can go along what was originally approved, let's say, okay? What they were given the right to do something on their property at that time. If you use the same ideology on commercial paces, how many developer out there that's got approval? How long ago? Oh, no, we're going to change our mind. You're not going to build, you're not going to be able to put roads in, you're not going to put water in because we're going to put new rules in. Do you ever wonder why businesses are don't exactly jamming up here? Look at the condition of this county, folks. They can flip flop all the time. There's got to be some basic principles that you got to go by. If it is bad, you can shut it down. And I'm sure that's what building inspectors are for, but in this case, the pollution department come up and shut them down. If that record has been any bad, anything bad happened anywhere, let us know. I know his job is very important and he's tried to cover his butt, I appreciate it. But the bottom line is, they went through the process once upon a time and there were certain conditions they met. Now if there's law changed or something, fine, bring them up to date. Say, hey, you got it up to date. Is the equipment no good, useless or no muffler, no catalytic converter on it, whatever they have to put on there, they might have to go along with it. If they willing to put that kind of money and effort into this, it's way above my pay grade. I don't believe they're going to do it when they know there's a Mr. Moss or a new guy going to come down, hey, the gig is up, close it down, go home. You still got that power, you're not going to lose that power. If they don't comply, you're going to shut it down. If my cars run around without a catalytic converter or muffler, they're going to shut me down. As simple as that. You can make it, you can try to please and sugarcoat it and try to kiss up to any of these groups. If they don't comply, shut the damn thing down. You have that power, you have that option. And hey, there's going to be a big line lining up if they screw up. EPA, APA, fishing game, whatever you want to call it, they all want to get a piece of this action. You still have the right to push it, shut it down if they don't comply. As simple as that, folks. Give love a chance, folks. Give love a chance. Give peace a chance. Thank you.
The problem with that is the appellate claims that they are...
Can you state your name, please?
Pardon?
Can you state your name, please?
Judy Morgan.
Okay, thanks.
Judy Morgan.
Okay, Judy.
The appellate claims that they're overseen by all these government agencies. However, the government agencies don't oversee the traffic and the pollution on the road and that's why this is a discretionary project because somebody else has to oversee that. Thank you.
Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. We've heard reference to approval in 2007 of a similar situation and why it was approved then and what has changed. I don't think anybody was really aware of something going on in 2007 and what's really changed people's attitudes. We've got a lot of more information now how substances affect our lives and I think we've created an area of awareness now that we never had before. So I think that's one thing that's changed to make it different between now and 2007. So to quote something that was passed in 2007, that's almost 10 years ago, the people, and I was here in 2007, I don't remember anything coming up or being presented. So, and I'd just like to say that that's a big part of it also, that we were not informed then, we were not informed now. Things, things do get passed and approved and that's our fault for not paying a total attention all the time. But we were paying attention a little bit this time, we got a cut wind of it and we mobilized and we came together and we decided as a community that this was very scary and we didn't like the process that it took. And so if you were to require these folks to build a road that goes out the back end and doesn't go by people's houses, that would satisfy people on Silver Rapids. If you were able to show the community that, yeah, that's going to cost a lot of money to build an extra road, but we're so invested in Calaveras County that that's something that we would see clear to do, that may win us over too. Mainly denying the need for an environmental review and a SEQA is like, it's not taking the responsibility that we think you need to take. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Joe Kelly from the unrepresented area of District One. Did I hear correct, 180 more years? God bless you. But at what time, what point does equipment become obsolete and even more so technology change that it might be better? Number two, I kind of find it strange to be using a 2000, if I remember correctly, a 2007 application approved and walked away from. If Mr. Moss doesn't know why, who does? We sure don't. You folks don't. And if there's no records of every, or information in that as to what went on, how can they prove their point? How can they prove, how can you prove your point? How can they prove, how can you prove your point? That's the whole thing. If it wasn't done, it's not done. If they didn't, whoever it was didn't sign on to it, walked away, it's done. And you can say all you want that it's, oh, yeah, it was approved. Well, there might have been conditions that we don't know about. If the whole packet isn't there, we don't know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Point of order. You guys find dinner tonight?
Really? All right. So we're going to, we're going to close the appeal hearing and move on to the board discussion. Questions and action. Okay? And so, there. Now it's closed. Now we're going to move on. So board discussion. Who wants to go first?
Well, I said mostly what I had to say.
But by the time they finish, you might have something else, Chris. Probably not. Anybody want to start?
I'll start. You know, based on information that's been provided to us, there's nothing here to convince me that this is a ministerial action. I believe it's discretion. I would support the Planning Commission's position. I find if we had past history of prior approvals, if we knew, I don't even know if the 2007 project is comparable to what we have today, there's been a lot of concern over things that I think need to be answered in regards to pollution, toxins, that sort of thing, and to the air in and around the project and the neighborhood. And so I consider this project to be discretion for us here in the county.
Okay. Mr. Olivera?
Well, and once again, I've got the, I've got the benefit of being involved in this type of business for a period of time, and know more through education and personal involvement, both on the safety side, the operation side, the monitoring side, on state, federal levels, even county and city levels. I guess that's why I was pretty thorough in my questioning of the standards that we have to face. Now, I had to combine that information with the fact that the reason that we say this is a discretionary project is because we don't have anything to say it's not. We have a procedure. Yet, when I examined the facts through questioning and tried to cover all areas, to give the opportunity to review the pros and cons, I couldn't come up with a reasonable solution why this would be discretionary based on any evidence. Now, I don't want to take away from the ability of our air quality control department. I think they're, they're very good at what they do, especially Mr. Moss and Jason. But it's my position that I would support this appeal. I do recognize the fact that there is continual monitoring, and Mr. Price was right. If they fall without, if they fall out of those parameters, I guarantee they'll be shut down, but it won't be by counties Calaveras. It'll be by state air quality control board, and it'll be by a variety of things. And then we're not going to take 24 hours to do that. That's an immediate shutdown. Once again, I would support the appeal.
There's been concern about a number of things expressed, and I actually have some connections to the industry also that I really didn't know I had until I talked to him. My son operated a hot batch plant and gave me some, it was good to get advice from my son, because it used to be me giving it to him, so I did, did hear quite a bit. He started his career at George Reed, actually, as a laborer, and even worked at the plant near Clements where they have a hot batch plant. So he had some insight to it. Also ended up running during his, he's actually an executive with the federal government now, but he ended up running his, a hot batch plant in another state, which had much looser regulations than we do, apparently. And he did tell me things that they deal with and his line of the work. What I wonder is, one thing that I had heard, and I don't know the legal term for it, can you have a directed SEQA that studies specific things? And I don't know if that would be included with this, with this marching order, because basically, we're hearing about air quality, protection of the water source, some traffic through the community. And we know sometimes a SEQA can get started and all of a sudden blows up into a three-year study. And honestly, had Ford come forward with these things, we may not even have these questions now earlier in the game, would be my guess. And so I have that question. If we were to say, okay, we uphold the Planning Commission's findings with the direction that these items be studied?
You, there is an opportunity for focused SEQA review.
That's the term. Thank you. And so that's, that's my question that, and they may be able to get to those items pretty quickly, because I, I didn't have trouble finding EPA studies and Caltrans studies when I was trying to answer a lot of these questions myself. You know, I'm, I'm fearful of two things, because I have people on both sides of this issue who are talking to me, that I don't want to ignore the concerns of the people that live around the plant. I think they're real. But at the same time, if we have given a business an opportunity, I don't want to create a review process that lasts two years and basically, I mean, they're business people, they're not going to put up with that. They'll just pack up and leave, would be my guess, at least with the asphalt issue. And it's not like I haven't, you know, considered things, whereas what if we got them to process the asphalt somewhere else and brought the rock? But legitimately, that actually puts the roads, our roads under more pressure, because you're almost doubling the truck trips. And the suggestion that I've read about Rock Creek landfill was one that early on I imagined, and that still puts the trucks through Rancho Calaveras. So it's not, you're not going to get rid of them that way. So my, my question is, if we did this, could we give you a marching order and still vote on this at this time with a focused SEQA to study these specific things, so that it may come fairly promptly and answer the fears? I do agree with the gentleman's, I'm going to call it the mailbox comment, or maybe they could have gone and talked to him earlier on, and he wouldn't be at this stage.
Okay. Hang on, Steve.
Yeah.
Sorry to break it, break it up.
Okay. Go ahead. I'll, thanks.
I'm going to, so can we just take a break?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I got it.
We're going to take a few minutes break. Running out.